Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular open meeting. The date is November 18th, and I'm calling the meeting to order. The time is exactly 5:11 this afternoon. And at this point, I would please ask Mr. Ben Wardrop if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I see that.
If everyone can please stand, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Wardrop. And I would like to now ask our student board member to lead us in the mission and vision, please. Ms. Cave?
BHUSD Mission Statement, Vision Statement, and Values. Our mission is educational excellence, and our vision is for our students to realize their full potential and thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cave. Mr. Gallardian, could you please read the community pledge, please? Get your track shoes on, please.
Yes. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge difference of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gallardian. Okay, I just want to make a motion, I mean, I mentioned that Dr. Stern is giving us her location and will be on Zoom during the course of the meeting, which will require that all of the motions that we make will have to be done on a roll call. We'll not be able to say all those in favor say aye, but I will have to make a roll call at that time. Okay, so with that in mind, I would like to ask Dr. Chernus if there was, oh, wait, no, approval of the agenda. Before we start the agenda, did you have something that you wanted to pull from the agenda, Dr. Chernus?
Recommend approval of the agenda after pulling item seven.
Okay, thank you so much. So can I now get into motion for the approval of the agenda minus item number seven? Motion, please.
I, I so move.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Manicherry.
I'll second.
And who was the second?
I second.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask you, is this the agenda we're?
We're not there, that, we're, I haven't come to the consent calendar yet.
Okay, got it.
Okay, all right. So I will call for a roll call. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manicherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabat?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes. So it passes five and O with one provisional vote from the student member. Okay, report of closed session, Dr. Chernus. Was there anything that to report?
We have nothing to report out of closed session.
Okay, and that in mind, I think it's time for Mrs. Marcus Meets. I'm here with Kim Deluzio. I hope I pronounced the name correctly. I have a trouble with the last name, so I didn't call you Kim. And we're here with Mr. Suttle, Stephen Suttle. So thank you for joining me this afternoon. As you know, you're brand new to the district. This is your first year as the principal of your school. I would love to hear a little bit about your background and how you got here. Let's start with you, Kim.
Well, I started education back in the early 90s when I graduated from USC. I taught first grade right down the street from this university. And then for the next five years, I stayed in elementary school, and then I slowly transitioned to the middle school because I liked the upper grades. And then for about 20-something years, I've been in LA Unified as an elite middle school administrator, and here I am today, back again in elementary education.
Okay, and Mr. Suttle, about your transition to our school district?
Well, you know, both my parents were teachers, and so it was really in my blood to become an educator. Actually, my brother and my sister are also educators. I started teaching in 2002, and shortly after that, in 2007, I got into administration. And I've been enjoying the school site and the kids ever since.
If you were to tell me one of the things that, when you stepped into the school, what was one of the first things that you thought was your biggest challenge going forward? And I will start with you, Kim.
Well, I, I would say, since I've been in middle school for so long, I felt that my biggest challenge was learning and adjusting my personality to the four-year-olds all the way up to the fifth graders because I'm high energy. What's cool with the kids, but still learn about the little labubu or whatever it is. So just like, just the different nuances of what little kids like, so that way I can build relationships with all the kids from TK all the way to.
Your turn, Mr. Suttle. What was your biggest challenge, you think?
Oh, you know, when I hear the word challenges, my brain flips it, and I think opportunities. But one of the best, best challenges and opportunities I've had, Horace Mann, is it's actually one of my own personal goals, to memorize each and every student by name. And so it's a lot of kids. I'm getting better and better every day, over 500 students. But what I hope to do, sooner than later, is every student that walks through that front gate in the morning, when I greet them, I want to greet every single student by name. And I'm getting better and better every single day.
That's a great goal. So let's go on to, if your friends were to describe you, what would your friends say about you as a person in, in life? What, what, I would, if I were to describe myself, I know what I would say. How would your friends describe you?
My friends would say fun and loyal. Once you become my friend, I will do anything for you.
I want to be your friend. Dr. Suttle?
Something similar for me. My friends would say I'm dependable, but if they need me, they can always count on me. And so I would say dependable, dependability is definitely a trait that I have.
Okay, now I'm going to ask you a question first, Mr. Suttle. What would you say if you weren't in teaching today? What secret dream or what secret thing did you have that you would always want to do if you didn't do what you're doing today?
For me, I really like to serve people, and so I would probably be a police officer or firefighter or someone in service, serving the community.
I think there's two things.
Okay, good.
Well, the first one is, I would love to be one of those people who travel around the world, eating really interesting stuff, things that people would not necessarily need, and then kind of comments and make, you know, make recommendations in terms of what they might like or what they might not like. And then the other thing is, I know it's really odd, but I would love, if there was a job where somebody would hire you to be a professional fan for like a sports team and hire me to cheer any, whoever's on the court, I would be so good at it.
Thank you so much, both of you, for being with me today. I really appreciate this because I've been waiting to do this, and I just got the chance today, and thank you for being here. I really appreciate it, and I hope you have a wonderful year going forward and that you get to achieve all your goals.
It's our privilege to hear, Ms. Marcus. Thank you so much for having us.
Oh, my pleasure.
Thank you for letting us serve our people.
I am. I'm trying very hard to get as many people in as possible, so we doubled up this week, and I thank them for being there. So thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to, I believe, the public comment, and believe it or not, we don't have a comment tonight, so we're going to pass that on, and I'm going to ask for an emotion for the consent calendar. Do I have a motion and with the items that have been pulled, please?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Correct me if I'm wrong, minus items D, E, and G.
Okay, do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Oh, excuse.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Stern.
I apologize. Items D, E, G, and K, Mandy.
Is that right?
Is that okay with you?
Thank you.
Okay, and the motion is for D, E, G, and K by Mrs. Manicherry. Dr. Stern, is that okay with you?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, I will call for a roll call motion. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manicherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabat?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, so it passes five and O with one provisional yes. Thank you very much. Okay, I will make, let's look at item number D. I need a motion to approve the Beverly Hills out-of-country trip. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve item 10D, the approval of BHHS out-of-country, I think it should be county, trip, BHHS Boys Basketball Tournament, December 26 through 29, 2025, Palm Desert, California.
Can I get a second, please?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Who pulled this and what was the reason for it being pulled, for an explanation or a comment?
Yeah, so I just wanted to get the details on it. Dr. Seaman?
Yeah, so annually, this is actually an annual tournament that we participate in, and so we are able to take our basketball tournament, our basketball team to Palm Desert. They play multiple days over winter break. It's very common for our, not only ours, but other school districts to participate in tournament-style play over winter break because you do have the flexibility of days. We have, it's 20 students, actually. I think I'd answered previous, it was 16 to 18, but the full roster's 20 students, but maybe some might be traveling. So it'll be about, probably about 16 to 18 students traveling to Palm Desert to play in a multi-day basketball tournament. Give them exposure. It's not CIF, so it doesn't put us in rankings or anything like that. Gives them the opportunity to have exposure to other teams that we may not necessarily play in our current league.
Thank you. I appreciate that detailed explanation. So I just wanted to know, like, basically, the district pays for parts of it, and then we have our families pay for a little portion of it?
Correct. So any, yep, any time that we are doing, well, we would potentially consider optional, right? So this isn't a CIF play due to the fact that it is out of county and it does require a hotel stay, we do ask for the families to provide some of the coverage for the hotel stay.
Okay, and does it, it doesn't matter how many participate? It's still the same coverage we are requesting from the families?
Correct.
Okay, and then also, what about the chaperones? I know that now we're requesting for the parents if they want to chaperone?
Yep, and so with athletics, which is different than, say, a educational overnight trip, such as like a team building, we do have actually some parents that assist with chaperoning for our athletics tournaments. They'll help provide snacks for the players, you know, like at a robotics tournament, so they'll actually put up tents outside, you know, provide water, do some runs to like the Walmart or whatever to get us other things that we may need.
And then, thank you for that.
They do pay their own way, though.
That was my question.
Yes, they do pay their own way.
And so we just tell them how much they need to cover the cost. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, I will call for the, any other comments on this? I'll call for the question. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manicherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabat?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus, yes, is a yes, so it's a five and O with one preferential. Okay, moving on to the next one. I will make a motion for the approval of a Beverly Hills out-of-country trip for the Beverly Hills Girls Basketball Trip, the MLK Showcase, January 17th and 18th at Solano Beach in California. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Manicherry. I believe that you pulled this item probably for the same reason?
Yeah, it's basically the same thing. I wanted to know, you, you wrote that how many of the girls are going to be attending, and is it, is it neared? Everything is the same?
Yes, everything's the exact same.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? None? Okay, I'll call for the question. Mrs., Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manicherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabat?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, so it's a five and O with one preferential vote. Okay, moving right along, we move to item G. I call for a motion to approve, I'll make the motion, approval of resolution 2025-2026-09, authorizing the establishment of a new bank account for the Enterprise Fund, Fund 63. I make a motion. Does anybody want to second it?
I second.
Thank you. I believe, Ms. Sabat, you pulled this. Is there some?
Yes.
Concern you have?
Yes, so basically, in regards to, this is going to be the supervision of the signatures for the district. Should I speak directly to Dr. Chernus? So I would like to know, I know there needs to be two signatures. I would prefer, and I don't know what the rest of the board has their opinion or what they would like, there should be two signatures and not four, two additional, and also, there shouldn't be a designee because we already have, we should know who's going to be signing the checks, in other words. So I, I propose that Dr. Chernus and Mari Lou.
Mr. Arcas, can you respond? Thank you.
Hi, Mari Lou.
Hi.
Hi, Mari Lou.
So we need to open up a new bank account for this enterprise fund, and in order to do so, we are required to do a resolution. The reason that you have those names on this resolution is because our accountant needs to be able to make the deposits, clear the accounts, and do all the administration, and so the bank requires that their names are there if they're going to have access to the account. They are not signers. They do not approve the checks or anything like that. The signers and authorized users would still be through the annual motions that you guys have revised, so approvers would only be Dr. Chernus, myself, or anyone on the annual motions, resolutions that you guys receive whenever we have updates, but this is just solely to open up the bank account, and we would need our accountants to have access to that.
I appreciate that. The problem that I have, it says authorized signators, and they're under that as we're approving it as a board, so I, I, can't we have other, they can make deposits. You don't have to be a sign, you don't have to sign on the account to make a deposit.
We can work on the wording, maybe do a different bullet point and just have them to have access to the account, but not be.
On number four, I would recommend just leaving Dr. Chernus and yourself.
Okay.
And then the other two, I, I would not, you know, have signators on the checks because that's very specific, but of course, they can go and make the deposits, or basically, it's just the deposits. Is there anything else they need to do?
Right, no, just have access to like the online portal to make the deposits.
But let me ask you, do you do electronic deposits?
So that's kind of the purpose of opening this bank account as we're expanding on the enterprise fund. We want to be able to receive electronic deposits for that purpose, and so that's why we're not doing it through our main BHUSD bank account. We want to have it differently for just enterprise purposes.
Yeah.
And we are going to have electronic payments, deposits, but that's where our accountant will need to do the clearing accounts through Laco, the county office.
So do you want the other two to open the account online and be able to take a look at? They still don't need to be the signators on the account.
Right.
So that, that's the only concern that I have. Whatever else you want to do, I understand that, that's part of their position, but just here where we're, you know, approving this for opening this bank account, if we can revise that?
Yes.
I have a concern on that. On all the other accounts that we have, how many signatures do we have? Don't we have all of the signatures that are in the document that we sign earlier on when we take the office?
Yes, so the only signers on any of the accounts, checks and accounts, are Dr. Chernus and myself and anyone that's authorized per the annual motions.
So that they would also be, she's limiting the other authorized people from the other signatures that we have?
Here, let me, let me show you.
Well, they're not on the other file, so these two accountants, they're not going to be signing anything or approving. I just need them on the resolution to be able to include them to have access to this new account that we're establishing. They're already a part of the BHUSD account that we normally have and the food services account for just our accounting purposes. There are people that work with those.
Well, but I understand, there, are they different than the ones that we already have?
Yes.
Yes, the ones that we already have are higher-level staff.
Right, these are not approvers. I just need them to be able to have access to.
Just to, just to be clear.
But what are we approving? So how, so let me ask you a question. Do you want us to table this and then you come back with a revised version, or do you want me to amend the motion and approve it as amended, which would be that they're not, because what I'm hearing from you is that the Ms. Salinas and Ms. Witherspoon would not be authorized to sign checks?
Right.
But that's not the way it's written. So for our purposes, okay, so who made the motion?
I made the motion to approve the resolution, and you seconded it.
Okay, so should we amend our motion?
Well, before you do that, how does that tie your hands?
So Colby's working on really cool things, and we need to establish this bank account to be able to use it through the enterprise fund, so if you guys would please approve it with an amendment, we can fix the wording, but it would be beneficial, we were, to approve it.
It would be beneficial to leave it as it is?
No, 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 we need to amend it now.
What, no, amend it now, rather than do it, okay.
We can amend it now.
But it doesn't tie your hands to take the names out at this point, is what I'm saying.
I would like to amend it where they're not authorized signers, but will have access to the bank account.
Okay, so maybe I can make a suggestion for organization that we would have a 4A and a 4B. So 4A would be authorized signatories, and it would continue, it would be as it is now with just yourself and Dr. Chernus being authorized signatories with the verbiage the same. Yes, and then we would add a 4B, which would be authorized account accessors, people that can access the account, and it would include all four of them.
Mrs. Manicherry, how do you access the account? What do you need, they don't need to access the account.
They do.
They need to access the account?
They deposit, and then they do the clearing. It's accounting.
But depositing is not accessing the account. What did you say was clearing? So clearing, they need to access the account.
Well, they need to access it, like, the bank will not provide them any credentials to log in or have access to do what they have to do if they're not a part of this resolution.
If you log in to an account, you can give it to anybody if they have the passcode. You do it directly from here, from your office.
Right, but I, yeah, I wouldn't want to share any, my personal login to the bank account. I would like for them to have their own login.
So we know who's doing what?
Exactly.
Right, so let me ask you. If you, if the bank gives an access, let's say, to four people, those four people are not on the account, or they, I mean, two out of the four will not be on the account, or you're asking that they are going to be on the account?
They're not on the account as, they don't have like authority to do much, but they will be able to print and deposit and do the accounting transactions that they already do for our food services bank account, for our district bank account. It's just we're now opening.
They're not in the account?
Because I'm.
It's a new account.
No, I know it's a new account. So I'm, my question is, when you open up a new account, you get authorizations, you go to the bank, all of you need to go to the bank, sign the documentations, you get a card, and you get an access to go into the account, correct? Is that what they're going to be doing?
It's a little bit different. It's, the only authorized users that would sign to officially open the account would be Dr. Chernus and myself.
Okay, that was my question.
But all that, the reason that their names are on the resolution is to see that they're authorized to get a logging credential to it.
So we, as a district, is, are giving it to them, not the bank, right?
Right.
Okay.
But the bank wants to verify that it was board-approved, that they have access to have a login credential.
Got it, got it. So, okay, so two signatures, and then.
So for, for we, we're all on the same page that it will include everything that's already there, but the only two names are Dr. Chernus and Ms. Arson. For me, there will be the same, except it will not have the phrases to execute signature cards, comma, sign check. So it's a more limited use, and then that will provide for all four of the folk members. Okay? And then, done, which is what we do this way is what I expect.
Yes.
I will, with, we need to get a motion to change.
Can you amend your?
I will amend mine to include the action of adding item B to this A and B.
And revising A accordingly. And revising A accordingly.
Right.
Okay, and I amend my second.
Okay, thank you, okay, so we'll call for the motion, Dr. Stern? Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manichari?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabag?
With the amendment, yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes, and, did you get the amendment to that, Ms. Austin? Okay, thank you. Okay, that motion passes five and oh with one provisional. Okay, we have, we pulled item G, no, we pulled item K, approval of conferences and workshops. I need a motion for the approval of conferences and workshops, please.
I move to approve item K.
Thank you so much, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Stern, okay. Is that your?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I would like to revise the, okay, one second, the conference for CASBO, Annual Conference, can we revise for them to reflect the same for each other? With actually just an additional, I think, who responded to that? An additional for the parking, I think, or they can get reimbursed for the parking?
But, yeah, we can, we can make sure that they are
Just the same.
Correct, yes.
Is that because someone was not, did not include what their needs would be for parking, so you want to make sure that's paid?
I think they overestimated, they should, they have exactly the same position and needs, so maybe we need to reflect that, Will? I mean, I guess we can just revise it and then we can, maybe Chrissy can revise it and we can approve it.
Oh, yeah, so just so you know, these are the first two, there'll be several other people attending this conference, mostly from the business.
So, maybe put them all together, if that's okay, because it's going to be in March anyways.
We can do that.
Okay, that would be fantastic.
But also too, I mean, so, if you look at the trip I just took to New York, my allocation was higher because I had agreed that I was going to be covering the transportation, so
Right, it's not the same, though.
Yeah.
But actually, Sagali makes, maybe he makes a good point, because maybe as between them, one person said, I'll cover, I'll keep ordering the Uber for all of us for the trip.
There'll be some differences, like travel, mileage.
Well, and these are not to exceed numbers, too, so it's
Well, on the next one, for the rest of the staff, they'll be going to this, we're going to try to just provide the same amount for all, for however many it is.
Well, are you questioning why there's a difference in the amount for the same conference for the same amount of time? Is that what you're questioning?
I'm not questioning, I'm just saying it needs to be revised, because I've already asked, and from the answer, it just needs to be revised, that's it.
Your answer to that was about the parking, right?
Well, that's just a little part of it, it's, they can put that in, like, put everything in, they know the answer.
I want to provide some background to this conference and what happened, sometimes the proper way is to do the conference form, and so it's based on like a budget, the second one, the second one that's listed, she actually had her accommodations ready, so she knew the cost of the hotel, whereas the first one, when it was submitted, because it goes through a layer of approvals in our department, and so when it was submitted, it was like a budget, and the purpose is to set aside, do we have the budget for you to attend this conference, but we only reimburse up to the actual cost, right?
Either way, they bring the receipts and then you pay according to that, you're not exactly paying what we're approving.
Right, so that was a difference.
So, we can go ahead and approve it, but it doesn't mean this is what we're paying.
Exactly.
I mean, that, I'm good with that also.
But so, if you see the difference, is because she act, one of them had her actual accommodation cost, and the other one was estimating based on
Got it, yes, yes, so I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But I, but I do want to clarify to Mr. Stewart's point, sometimes one person is more than another, because they're like, I'll just use my Uber the whole time.
They're carpooling, they're carpooling, yes.
Their mileage will be different.
Yes.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments? No, okay, now I'll call for the question. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manichari?
Yes.
Ms. Sabag?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes, so it passes with a five and oh with one provisional vote, okay? Okay, we are now to a comment, not an approval amount, but a construction update on buildings at B3, B4, and the Olympic parking lot at the high school, and we'll hear from Mr. Carrad and Mr. Solari.
Good evening.
Hello.
Sorry, I see the sign until this
Okay, good evening.
Thank you again for your time, a little bit of update about what's happening in our board and your construction projects, I'm going to start with the south side parking lot, we have started our procurement phase, and if, well, yeah. So, RFQ, Requests for Qualifications, was published in October 2nd, we had a mandatory job walk or pre-proposal meeting on October 8th, we had four design-build teams attended our pre-proposal meeting, the deadline for submission was November 3, we received three statement of qualifications, one of them was non-responsive, and we have shortlisted and reviewed twos, and we have asked both of them to provide a proposal, a cost proposal for the services. RFP was published on November 12, so right now, they are working on their preliminary design and the proposal, and the deadline for submission of that, I cannot read the screen, is December 23rd, so we are going to be reviewing those and interview the both of the teams, so by January 9th, we are going to basically know which direction we are going to go, we give them a little bit more time for the adjustment and final, basically, if there is anything that needs to be tweaked, and our goal is to bring the contract in front of the board on January 27th, so the design-build entity is going to start full design by that time, we give them till April 8th to complete their design and submit
Excuse me, do you have copies, I mean, of this, for the board?
Unfortunately, no.
For the bid, for the bid proposal?
No, no, I need to see. What do you want to see? We're going to undo it anyways.
This is informational, right now.
Let's just keep going. So, they are going to submit to DSA in April, and we are anticipating that we are going to have three months, again, that's the only part that's unknown, but considering the scope, we think it's going to take DSA to approve, to review for about three months, so our goal is in, to be in construction in July and finish the project by October. Again, the only unknown part of this is DSA, but we are hoping that we get the approval in three months. That's basically the location of the parking, obviously, this is an schematic, and it doesn't show the off-ramp, because again, this is a design-build project, we don't have the design, but basically, that's the location of the parking, that switchback ramp that goes to the stadium is also part of the scope, so when this is done, you can utilize the parking lot even with the existing stadium without having the future football stadium built.
Does anyone have questions?
All right, so let's go around, Ms. Cave, do you have any comments or questions you want to ask about this?
Yes, well, I don't have a question pertaining to the parking lot specifically, but I do have a question for another part of the construction, specifically for the auditorium, I mean, I'm on the dance team, and so we use the stage to kind of set up our dances and rehearse, and for the past few months, we've been told, like, it's going to be ready, we're going to be able to rehearse in there, and it just keeps getting pushed back, so I just want to know if there's any date you guys have in mind, or like, an estimate of when that will be done, so that the team can go in and start rehearsing for our show.
Sure, I think you can start your rehearsal, Will was in communication with your instructor, so starting next week, that would be a possibility to start doing your rehearsal on the stage. Mr. Stewart was with us in the building for like hours today, so the building is, construction portion is mainly complete, and they are working on low voltage and electrical stuff, so that was already communicated to your teacher.
So, the stage will be
Can be, yeah.
Can be used?
Yeah.
By next week?
By end of next week.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So Any questions on the parking lot?
Get an answer.
Projects.
Okay.
Not this time.
Mr. Stewart?
So, you don't want to ask your questions?
No, not right now, no.
I have a question, what if we wanted to build up this one?
Go ahead.
What if we want, and I don't take credit for this question, but I'm going to ask it, what if we wanted to, not build underground, but we wanted to build up, and I do apologize for asking this question, because I know that you, you have spent your time and care in moving at a direction at the board's instruction, but if we wanted to really add value to our property and our operations, and, you know, with the anticipation of having heavy usage for Peters and football games and so on and so forth, and this is off the top of your head, I'm sure, but would a going up of a parking structure, let's say, for example, three, four stories, not, not super high, would that be possible in this area?
No, technically, you cannot build anything in this area because of the past oil activities, and this land only can be utilized for a field.
Yes, but
So, you cannot build any structure in that, in the area of the south side parking.
Not a parking structure even?
No, no.
Oh, wow, so it has to be flat land on ground level?
So, you can have it as a sportfield, you can have it as a parking lot, you can have it, so.
Why is that?
Because there are, as a corner of this side, you have like 20 something oil wells that, there is an oil well head over there that you need to always have ventilation over that, and that's part of the mitigation plan that was approved for the site.
Plus, if you build up, you would have to build caissons. You'd have to go down a bit. Yeah, you'd have to go down.
Yeah, that's technicality of the construction, but I don't think, like, because of the regulations, you can't even do that.
So, there's a zoning restriction in that case?
It's not zoning, it's the oil underneath the ground.
Yeah, it's because of the
It's a usage restriction.
Oil wells.
Yeah.
So, is there, is this usage restriction something in writing?
It's part of the mitigation plan approved for the site, we can share with you.
So, let me get this straight, as part of the mitigation plan,
Mm-hmm.
it specifically states you can have only a flat parking lot or field, you can't have a multi-level park?
Yes, and I am not sure about that, because again, this question just came up, I think as part of the agreement with Calgem, which is the department, the state department that controls all the oil or minerals, that's also part of that, again, I have to do a little bit more study on that part, but I think that's part of the requirements also.
Can I ask you, I'm, I'm hearing that the problem is you cannot go down, so the digging to the oral wells that are down, you can only build on level?
In my understanding is, yeah, you cannot build any structure because of
Yeah, meaning, if you're going to build up, you are building down, because you have to build the caissons to hold it from going up.
Yes.
So, you cannot dig down, and that's part of the, what they told you you cannot do.
Yes, and also, there are some abandoned substructure underground over there that be backfilled, if you remember, as part of the
It's not a zoning issue, it's a particular use soil, yeah, exactly what we have, yes.
But, do you mind furnishing our superintendent and the board with that paperwork?
Sure, definitely, yeah.
Just so we can review it and, you know, have a full understanding?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It also says that you're going to give us a B3, B4 update, is that correct?
Well, I have a question also on the parking.
Okay, that's why I'm, I called it.
Wait, but can, can we finish parking for one, one second?
I thought we had.
No, I have a question.
Oh, you have another question, go ahead.
Me too. I'll have Judy finish first.
Sure, thank you, are you sure?
Yes.
Can you go back to the rendering, and I know that it's not
I don't, yeah.
That's fine, so I'm just trying to understand, when I'm looking at it, the bleachers, this project, the parking lot project, to what extent, what are the lines of this project?
Basically, that's, that's basically ADA switchback ramp that you see,
Mm-hmm.
if that's going to be built, and everything above the bleachers, all the way to the Heath, and everything, and it's sort of the baseball field, is going to be part of the scope for this project.
Okay, and then on the far end, to the left, Will, and then now down, keep going, keep going, keep going, stop, so is that area intended to be like an access point?
Yes, that's an ADA access point between the parking and the stadium.
Okay, so let's talk about operationally how that would work, school is closed, okay, and the parking lots are built, the fields are built, and we have folks that, let's talk about our different parcels and our different pieces to our property that would be open at that time, so would this
It's going to be fenced off, so the parking, yeah, the parking is going to be fenced off from the school.
Yes.
So, there is two sets of gates, there is going to be a gate that's going to access the street to the parking lot, and there is another set of fans at the end of the parking lot that separates that from the school, so if you have some event in the football stadium that you want to only have access from the parking lot to the stadium, you can basically separate that from the rest of the campus, when all the projects are complete.
Okay, I have a couple questions about this, first, let's please talk about the fence height.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because we won't, it's been coming up, so now let's do it in advance, at present, when you went out for bid, how high is that fence in the back supposed to be?
The fence that faces the street is 10 feet tall wrought iron, so it's not going to have anything in the middle, it's going to be just all pickets.
Lines, yeah.
And the interior fence is going to be six feet tall, which is going to be channeling fence, so that's inside the campus after you pass the gate.
Between the parking area and the athletic field.
And the rest of the school, yeah.
Okay, so as a board, speak now or forever hold your peace, because this has gone out for bid, and this would be the last moment in time that anything could change.
No, it's not, we still need to approve it, right?
Well, that's what's gone out for bid, so if we want to not waste time, this would be the moment to share with our construction management team that we would like for it to be X feet higher than what it is, otherwise, we're going to lose two months.
Do you have the details for bid?
Wait, it does, height of the fence have to be included in the DSA when you submit it for DSA approval?
This is a design-build project, so we have put together a set of criteria, the criteria is defined with these two heights that I already presented.
We did this for the tennis court, we didn't have plans for the tennis court, and so Mr. Solari went out and did a design-build RFP, he asked for proposals for a group that would both design it and build it for us.
Correct.
So, we're now, are the folks who have come back within reason of where we, where our team expects for the numbers to be, are basing their proposal on the height that he just expressed to us.
But have you already submitted for proposals to come in, or not yet?
Yes.
Yes, they are, they are working on their proposal, and they're going to submit back to us for review.
So, that's why, Trusty Sabag, you're correct, this is not the last moment, but if we don't want to waste any time, this is the last moment for us to express any concerns, otherwise, then we will be pushing the project back.
So, let me ask you, are we talking about the perimeter fence is going to be 10 feet?
10 feet, yes.
And that's going to be And that's going to be on Olympic?
Yes.
And how far along Olympic would that go? Is that just halfway?
Technically, yes, I don't know if you remember.
To the whole school, it's going to be the whole school.
It's going to go all the way to the street, the street that comes through?
It's basically from the gate or the old gate that was serving that old Venecoside. It's a gate that has a cutoff ramp.
Meaning the whole school on Olympic where the entrance is, it's going to be the whole area?
It's not the whole school, it's like almost half of the length of the school on Olympic, all the way to that medical building.
Right, but then the next company, the next construction company who does the athletic field will do the remaining portion, is that right?
Yes, yes, the rest of that is different because it's going to sit on a wall. You are going to have a little bit of retaining when you go toward the future football stadium. This is going to be on the surface of the street because it's a driveway.
Okay.
Does the athletic field, the baseball field, the outfield higher than the parking lot?
Yes.
So do we want to ask our bond management team if they want to, if they can explore 12 feet or 15 feet on the backside, or do we want to leave it at 10?
Well, I'm trying to understand if it's not the whole area. So does that mean it's going to be 10 feet and then go down?
The site is not flat, so Olympic is basically a slope.
Yeah, yeah, it's a slope, right.
In order to prepare enough land to build your future football stadium, the rest of that is going to be a little bit higher than...
So the lower part is going to be 10 feet and then it's going to gradually be a, it's going to be a shorter fence, but in actuality, it's all going to be 10?
Yes, or more.
So it should all be the same height, so meaning because of the concrete and the slope, it's going to be shorter.
I agree with that. I'm just raising the question because this is our chance.
Yes, 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 appreciate that. So what is the height right now that existing?
There is no fence over there, there is a brick wall.
A brick wall?
Yeah.
Why don't we keep it as a brick wall?
Because we have to demo it, it's not safe, it's not DSA approved, it's old.
Why don't we replace it with a new wall?
How high is the brick wall? I would rather have the brick wall.
The brick wall won't stand with all the construction that's happening, it will fall.
But we cannot accommodate because now we are going to have a driveway. So if you remember, you are going to have a driveway inside the property.
Right.
So that's the portion that most of that wall is going to go away regardless and you need to have fence to accommodate the drive.
Because we're changing the whole design of it?
Yes, yeah.
Got it, but can we do, so is that fence that we're talking about, the 10-foot fence, is that fence going to be seen from Olympic? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so can we make that fence a brick wall instead of a fence?
It's going to be very costly because for building a brick wall adjacent to the street, you need to have foundation, you need to go deeper. So it's going to be above budget that we have for the project.
So the existing wall, we're going to demo it all the way down? Like, we're not going to use any of that?
Yes, you can't.
Like the line?
That wall was affected by the...
That wall was for the oil facility that was there and it's really old wall also.
So if it was in good shape, we would still get rid of it because the design is changing, in other words?
You had to because we have to have a driveway already.
Right, got it.
The brick walls are deep.
So we're going to have basically a driveway and that'll leave us open to a fence that, I mean, I would like it to be a wall or higher. It's going to be right on Olympic, so it's right, going to be very close to the metro.
Right, but it's 10, it'll be 10 feet high.
Yeah, but it's going to be right on the metro, we already have people coming in.
It's going to have spikes on top, so, but there's no way you can get over it.
Yes, okay.
Where there's a will, there's a way, is what she wants to say. But I have a question. When you come back with the proposal that you suggested, can you also provide us an aerial view from the other side? Like, let's say we were standing on the south side of Olympic. I would love to know what the drive aisle is going to look like.
The designer, when we start designing this, obviously we are going to have renderings. At this point, there is no design, these are all...
Yes, yes. Just we'll know exactly what it's going to look like.
So to answer your question, yes, let's make it higher.
The reason that 10 feet was, and I believe we kind of discussed this, is just anything above 12, anything about 10 is going to be custom-built. So they have, the cost is going a lot higher, but it's your call.
Well, let me ask you, the iron fence is not custom-built, it's already prefab?
The 10 feet is on the fabrication line, basically, it's...
Standard.
It's standard, 8 feet, 10 feet, and then where do you go?
6, 8, 10.
6, 8, 10, it stops at 10?
Yeah, everything after that is going to be custom ordered. It's doable, but again, it's going to add to the cost.
I hear you that this piece of the puzzle is much closer to the Los Angeles side and the metro that's coming up.
Metro's right there.
I would be interested to know what the differential would be for 12 or 14?
Sure, we can ask, we can add a basically line item and just ask them to provide price for both of them.
Okay, and then that way, it's our decision to make?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Is that okay with everyone?
What was the final, I still have questions.
We're thinking about 12 feet.
The question is that they will add an addendum, asking them to also provide the numerics for higher?
Yes, can I ask you?
So how high, is it 12?
Can I ask you, the fence that we have here at Hawthorne, how high is it, do you think, behind?
I don't know.
Because it's pretty high and I like that height.
But here you have chain link fence.
It's a different fence, but the height, I'm just talking about the height, where.
So let's talk about that. For that side of the property, do we need a wrought iron fence? What would happen if we went higher?
Well, it's harder to climb.
And even, even like for the field, so for the field portion of it, which is further east, wouldn't it be better if we had, like for example, a tennis court-style fence?
You have that for the field.
Then you can climb it.
What do you mean?
You can climb chain link.
No, we don't want a chain link fence because it's easier to climb.
But how about for the balls?
For the parking lot?
No, on the, well, because...
That has, the football stadium has high netting and everything as part of the design.
High netting?
Yeah, we are talking about the...
No, but let me ask you, the iron fence, it's still going to have pillars in between, correct? It's not just an iron fence all the way around with no pillars or nothing. It's still going to have something in between, right?
It has columns that basically keeps the panels.
So the columns, they can climb, they can hold on, it's like climbing, you know...
There is no, there is no horizontal bars in this, everything is vertical, so...
Right, but I'm just... Okay, so...
We'll get cost for 10 and 12, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, so 10 is the current request.
We're getting a cost differential for 12.
12 is the additional. So let's check out 14 as well while we're at it.
So two, three separate prices?
Please.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Eddie? Oh, beautiful.
Are we done with the fencing questions, Ms. Savag?
Thank you, thank you, I was like, I was just, you know, piggybacking on her questions.
Please go on to B3 and B4.
But I, wait, I have one more question. How many parking spaces do we have there?
It's going to be between 100 to 120, depends on how design works because again, it's not fully designed.
Okay, and then can I ask you, what was the reason we put parking there? Is there a reason or we just did it to fill that space up?
Well, that because of the same restriction, there was no better location at the site.
So it's just nice to have and then we'll figure out what we'll do with it?
No, we need more parking.
No, more parking, and that was a space that became somewhat available because of the land used.
The only thing that concerns me is the exhaust coming from the cars while the kids are playing on the field.
But the cars will be parked.
Yeah, but they can leave and go as much as they want, nobody's restricting them. If a bus comes in, they're probably going to, well, okay, that was my concern.
You are next to Olympic, the most busy street in all Beverly Hills.
We've been next to a length bit all this time.
No, but it's going to be right on the field. Okay, just continue.
Okay.
And there is no other location at the site that you can accommodate any parking.
Please update us on B3 and B4 and explain the situation in the auditorium because it was our understanding it'd be done by now.
Sure, you want to go through the photos? So there were a couple of glitches during the last week. There was a low voltage crew that's supposed to come from Canada and start connecting the stage that was pushed because of, I believe, flight issues for about 10 days. They finally showed up last week. That was one of the main reasons that the low voltage was not complete because they showed up about 10 days late. There are some issues with the also flooring of the stage that was resolved and they are working on it as of today. So these two main things was pushing and the schedule, but as of today, mainly all of those are resolved and they are solely working on the low voltage and final connections. And this is the stage of completion as of last night.
It's really beautiful, I would say, you know, I was, the last time I walked it, I was having a hard time seeing where 1200 would fit because the seats were covered, the flooring was covered. But now that I see these pictures, it's gorgeous and the foyer looks more beautiful than I thought it would be with the mural. Yeah, that's gorgeous, thank you.
You're welcome.
Charlotte?
So close.
When's the dance show?
Middle of January.
Okay.
Very exciting.
Thanks for your question.
Good question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Review of the Hillman Air Quality Investigation Report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe you all were provided a copy of the report that Hillman did two weeks ago now. Basically, we had asked them to come out and kind of do an investigation of the current air quality at Elrodale, both interior and exterior. They did a thorough walkthrough of the entire building to test the air quality for various different elements and they did not, you know, find any of those elements to be at raised levels even beyond their more stringent minimums. So basically, to address the concern about the construction next door, we had them come out and they did not find any air quality issues in the building and outside the building. And they made it a point to check the outside air during a time when there was some good amount of construction happening at the One Beverly Project. So I'm open to answer any questions as best as I can based on their report.
First of all, I'm happy to hear that the report came back clean. What the board has is two items here. First, you have the report by Hillman that with a clean report. Then the second is a contract with them to do future monitoring. And I think that's important so we get, we have our own testing information data that we receive for us and hopefully it is corroborated by One Beverly Hills' testing data.
So that was the report then, yeah, I can answer questions about the proposal if we want to talk about that as well.
Thank you. Okay, are we starting with Mandy or Charlotte?
Yes, Dr. Stern, well, let's start with Ms. Cave. Do you have any comments about the contract for the, that'll be funded through the general fund for the monitoring of the air quality at Elrodale School?
I have no comments on that.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I too concur with Dr. Chernus. I'm glad to see that the report came back at safe levels. I guess my question is, I feel like we're kind of inadvertently being punished financially on a construction project that has nothing to do with us. And although I agree with having our own third-party data that we can trust that is not potentially tainted by the group across the street, I'm concerned of if anything escalates across the street where we're going to have to spend more and more money on monitoring things, including potentially, once the main construction begins, you know, it's also fairly close to the high school, you know, as well. So I just hope that we are not just simply spending money where the culprit of the potential dangers to our students is coming from this project. And I hope that we can still keep our lines of communication open with the One Beverly Hills team to make sure that there is either some cost sharing or even cost covering of this since we are trying to protect our kids against something that was not even our choice.
Thank you. Dr. Stern, before I go on, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. I, when One Beverly Hills came out to visit or to speak with us, it sort of reminded me, Russell, what you were saying, that absolutely, as we know, the city entered into indebtedness. We, you know, passed a bond and we were able to give them some of the financing ahead of time. And so by all means, they should absolutely ensure the safety and continued safety of all of the residents that are right next door at Elrodale. So thank you, that's all I have.
Mrs. Benachiri?
Yes, thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify a few things for our community, so for whoever's listening, they can be comforted. Dr. Chernus, thank you for your time in setting this up for us. My understanding is that you actually interviewed several potential consultants and this was the one that you felt was the best, is that correct?
That's correct.
That was also my question.
So thank you for taking the time to do that. The proposal, even though the report that they provided us today is like a mini-report on the inside, this report is necessary because the outside is already being monitored. And so this is helping us close the loop on the inside and the results are quite comforting, I would say. I do want to highlight that the quote for the continued monitoring that Hillman Consulting is going to provide us covers both outside/exterior air monitoring using three air monitors. There will be two air monitors placed along Wilshire and another one that is placed closer to the kinder play area. And so what that means to our community, it means that the development group has their monitors, which we do trust, and then in addition to that, we now have our own third-party independent monitoring going on as well. And I wanted to, Dr. Chernus, ask you and Will if you could please follow up with the developer. At the last meeting, we had asked for them to also install mature trees along the Wilshire line. And I know, I believe that they updated us and they were looking for permits to do that. I know it's going to take them a minute, but do you mind following up on that?
Absolutely, in fact, they did indicate a desire to come back to the board with some follow-ups on the request.
Thank you. And then also, I think that I had asked that the barriers that they have installed, the ones that are like at the intersection of Wilshire are much shorter and are open a lot. And I also asked them if they could extend that one, I think it would have a big impact. Whatever else we asked them at that time too. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, so I'm also in agreement that we took this proactive, you know, to hire a company that will check and monitor the air quality. And we inherited this without our consent of the building of One Beverly Hills. And I am hopeful that they will take care of our, you know, our students and our staff, their safety and their health. And we're going to continue to be proactive and make sure that the air quality is, you know, sufficient inside and we're doing also the outside. And this came out with flying colors, right? We're good right now and we're going to, they'll continue to come and monitor as it progresses. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I make one more comment, guys? I apologize, I forgot one thing. On the contract itself...
Well, should we go to the contract?
Well, that's what we're discussing right now.
No, we're discussing the report.
Okay, I can hold...
No, we're on, I thought we were discussing the...
There's a report and there's a contract.
No, I know, I thought we were discussing that.
We don't have a motion for the...
We don't have a motion on it yet.
Yeah, that's true, I can hold on that. Sorry I interrupted you, Mrs. Martin.
All right, so if there's no further comment... So if there's no further comment, I'd like to move for, to discuss the contract with Hillman Consulting. So I will make a motion to approve the contract with Hillman Consulting Limited Law LLC for air quality monitoring services at El Rodeo School. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Manichieri. Okay, now we'll go around and if there's concerns about the contract, we can make them and questions about it at this time.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Dr. Stern?
No, I'm okay at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Cave?
I have no concerns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Judy, how about it?
I just wanted to understand the dollars. So this is an expected duration of 12 months at the not to exceed of 160. But when I jump to page 134, it's possible that I'm not adding it all up, but on the bottom of page 134, I'm seeing a 138,000?
Yeah, so...
Am I missing a piece there?
There, there's several pieces. So what I did is, this is kind of more like a rate sheet on, based on their full scope of services. I spoke with this vendor and I kind of came up with a $160,000 mark for 12 months based on purchasing the equipment rather than renting. So you'll see, one of the items here is for rental of the equipment. On the following page, you'll see the $100,000 cost. It's a different page number on mine than it is on yours. So that's what, based on the purchase of the equipment only, that's how much it would be for, basically for, we get to keep the equipment after that. So the, the prices you saw above were for rentals of all these equipments. Because we're going to use this for over a year most likely, it makes more sense to purchase the equipment than rent it.
So on here, are we approving to rent it or, or purchase it?
Purchase it.
Okay.
So the, we'd be purchasing this equipment and then the additional cost that I added, which was around 60,000, was for the multiple services they'll perform. So originally, in all entails, they, they could come out every week, every other week, once a month to take their direct readings and walk the entire school site. But I told them I, we probably don't need them here every week.
Where is the 60,000 on here? So...
It's basically, it's the number I came up with with talking to the consultant after he submitted the proposal.
So it's 138,000 if we rent it, so it's 38,000 cheaper to purchase it. It really does make sense.
Correct.
And then it'll pay its dividends on the back end.
Yeah, and then we can keep and use these monitors at other schools or other sites if we wanted to.
Great, thank you for that.
We're paying for the extra 60s for them to, with the continuous monitoring, so they'll be monitoring the monitors continuously. And also, they'll be making a periodic visit, all starting off at once a month, but we can always increase or decrease it as time goes on.
Can I ask you for, for one more request, please? When the developer visited us, they provided a presentation and they presented the numbers, the lawful numbers, you know, and, and they are certainly meeting those numbers and they're much lower than those. Can you also ask our consultant if they quote unquote, "agree" with those numbers?
Yes, sure. I can ask them. And I can also bring them in to do a presentation if you prefer.
Thank you. Yes, so...
Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, thank you. I, I just have, I have a question in regards to the not to exceed amount. Where does it say in the contract that it's not to exceed? Because I see the exhibit A and B, but...
So based on this approval, we'd be actually, we, we don't typically, we have each vendor, we have our contract, would sign our own agreement. So once we approve this and the not to exceed amount, we'll prepare an agreement that states that amount, not to exceed.
Okay, so we're just going to approve a not to exceed amount and you're going to have the, the written part of it? And then do we need to approve that afterwards?
Uh, no, because it's a, the, the format is something that's already been approved. Our contract is already board-approved, uh, contract.
Okay, but once we approve not to exceed amount, there's probably going to come change orders of just the...
Well, that's where it can be flexible. We can actually do less or we can do more. The only thing we know we're purchasing for sure is the equipment, which is about the $100,000 mark.
Yes, so let me ask you, we're purchasing the equipment, who is able to run the equipment? Only this company?
I would say yes at this time because I don't know off the top of my head.
Because I'm trying to understand if our hands are handcuffed.
But we would probably, while they're here, we would want to get trained on how to use the equipment and have someone trained.
So it's not proprietary to them?
No, no. It's actually proprietary to this other...
So can we, can we put in the contract that it would include to train our staff maintenance or whatnot to use the equipment?
Sure.
And then we can continue to use this equipment for, for forever? Because I think it's fantastic to buy equipment like this, to be able to che, check, you know, the air quality inside, inside the buildings, correct?
Yes. Well, this is, these are, these monitors that we're purchasing are outdoor air monitors.
So the one we're purchasing is for outdoors, not indoors also?
No.
Only outdoor?
Yes.
The report was for indoor, right? So this one is for outdoor?
Yes.
So let me ask you, the outdoor monitors wasn't, didn't One Beverly Hills supply that?
Correct.
They put the equipment for the outdoor monitors and we're basically going to purchase the same equipment that's there? Or they rented an equipment and they put it there?
I don't know. I mean, they're using a third-party also. They're using a company we actually...
So they can reimburse us to purchase this equipment so that we can have it because it's going to be for years, few years?
Yeah, we can explore that with One Beverly.
Yes. So maybe we can also agree to, you know, do that. Well, Dr. Chernus will handle that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we can agree to ask them, I guess, and we'll see what they say.
Well, we'll, we'll see what's going to happen then. Okay, thank you. Because I wasn't sure if it was for indoor or outdoors.
Yeah, these are outdoor monitors.
Do they have also the indoor monitors? Because I think maybe we should do both.
So indoor monitors are typical, there's all different types, just from my general knowledge, that they're handheld monitors, you'd walk around and kind of take readings. And I think, you know, those are readily available. We could purchase much less than these outdoor monitors are. We could purchase those and...
So the outdoor monitors is, how long, the outdoor monitors that they put there, how long will it be there?
As long as we want, as long as the One Beverly Project is going.
If we own them, they'll be for perpetuity in a sense while they're working.
One Beverly Hills, we are, they already put us outdoor monitors?
One Beverly Hills put them, they're, they're monitors.
Okay, and so are they going to take it?
We don't want them to take them, we want them to leave them there.
Yes, and so this is going to be extra?
Yeah, these are our monitors that we read that are, we're giving the information.
Got it, we want, okay, got it. Yes, I love it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think everybody has pretty well discussed this. I approve, I mean, I like the fact that everybody's on top of the questions. I agree with the fact that we need to have this very carefully. My only thinking was that we'll have these here permanently and they will be in perpetuity as long as they're still working as, I don't know if they have a longevity or whether there's a guarantee on how long they'll last or whatever.
I can't speak to how long these last, but they do get, during this contract at least, they'll be getting regular maintenance as well. But I don't know how long they last.
Well, hopefully, I mean, hopefully that the project will be, I don't know how long it's going to take, but that, that some of the project does not require air monitoring because of the type of construction goes on.
Yep.
That this will cover the time that that is going to be the, a big issue.
Absolutely.
The demolition.
Yeah, that, well, and that and the initial construction.
Demol, concrete, and construction, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's something that, that concerns me that we have enough time covered with this, but I hope that that's the case. Okay.
Can I ask really quickly? Is there any way, instead of paying them the 60,000, they can just train our staff? Or is that difficult? Like, do we have the staff to be able to do that?
I think it'd be difficult because part of it is the, the 24-hour monitoring. We want to make sure that they are monitoring these things.
So they're going to be there 24?
No, remotely, you monitor the...
They're remotely.
So we can't do that? That's a problem?
Uh, I guess we can. We're not really trained and I think the whole point...
No, so that's what I'm asking. Can we pay them to train?
Sure.
And kind of, for the whole 60,000, let's say, we pay the whole, half of it, they're doing their, you know, staff and then the other half, they're training ours. Or they can do it at the same time?
Well, it's a not to exceed, so down the line, we can reduce it.
Yeah, we can...
Meaning, meaning can they add the training in there?
I'm going to speak to them, but I don't see why not unless, unless there's a proprietary reason that I don't know.
Well, it'd be nice if we could, if it's possible to incorporate maybe something into our command center with Sean, where if something does hit during the day that we could be notified.
Immediately, yeah.
Yeah, just add that to the contract.
Not to add more work to you, Sean, sorry, buddy.
I'm not saying it's necessarily Sean, but we should add that training to the contract.
One more screen inside the command center.
Just figure out who can do it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to call for the question. I'll start with Dr. Stern.
Yes.
Mrs. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manichieri?
Yes.
Ms. Sabag?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so it's four, five and O with a provisional from the student representative. Okay, we come down to the approval of an agreement to relocate radio room from Building A to the SDC building with the Garza Construction. I will make a motion to approve it and I would like a second.
I second.
Thank you so much. And I'd like to have a discussion on the why of this and, and everything else associated with it and the cost, if possible.
Sure, would you like me to explain first or is there a question?
Explain it.
So basically, the why...
Help explain, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Feel free to jump in whenever, but just to give you a quick update on the why. So our current ra, radio room location, which basically is the room that houses our servers, antenna receivers and other equipment necessary to, for our two-way communications to function, our critical communication system to function. The room it's in now is not adequate, there's no ventilation, it doesn't get air, so it's always hot, we have to have fans running in there all the time and the room is just not big enough. That's basically the bottom line. So we found an alternate location, the SDC, that's basically just an electrical room and it has the space to accommodate a new radio room, taking house all the necessary equipment, including new racks and proper HVAC system.
What about the air, the air possibilities?
Yeah, we're adding a split, this is part of this contract, is to add a split AC system.
Okay.
This is only in the high school, right? Building A?
Yes.
I have questions, yes.
Okay, but let's go around on this. Dr. Stern, do you have a question?
No, not at this time.
Uh, Ms. Cave?
Was the high school admin consulted with this?
Well, high school admin, I guess they were not consulted if you're referring to our principal. But are we, I think we're, is, who's asking that question? Are you?
Mrs. Cave is asking.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, I mean...
This is, this falls more on their, like, a, a maintenance of facilities kind of issue and the room we're taking over is not a faculty room or anything like that, if that's one of the reasons why you're asking.
It's a, it's a pre-existing electrical room.
Yeah.
That's interesting, yeah. Okay, anything else, Ms. Cave?
No, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Cause and drama. I just wanted to further talk about how important this move is. This, this room as is, is not just the radio room, it runs all communications for the district. It is where our comms come in for the police department, for the fire department. It is probably one of the most important rooms in the entire district. And if you had gone there even today, it is inside of the planetarium. So our plans for the planetarium and the revitalization and reopening of the planetarium is impossible without moving this room. And B, if you went into this room, they had, I believe the last time I checked, like five commercial, like, air blowers down the hallway because there's no ventilation in the room. In fact, the two times that I have been in that room in the last few months, there was overheating sensors going off and beeping down the hall because things were about to shut down. So I want to say how grateful I am to Will, to Ryan.
Ryan, yep.
Well, I was throwing you in first because you're sitting here, but Ryan Demavanti, if you're watching, which I know you're not, just the amount of passion that he has put into making sure that this gets done, it's been a lot of work. It is shockingly important. We, we would all know how important it was if it all shut down one day. And the fact that he has worked tirelessly to get this plan done and to push those, including us here at the board, to move this plan forward, I, I'm very grateful to him and the efforts of everyone and to approve this at this time because it is absolutely crucial for our kids' safety and for the future of our school district.
Thank you very much. I, I just wanted to make sure that we get that out there of the importance and so on.
Thank you. Just two questions. During open house at the high school, when the alarms went off, was this the room that the alarm, that was instigating that?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Mr. Stewart's saying unrelated.
No, it was not.
I'm going to ask the unpopular but necessary question, which is, do we, are we obligated to take this out to bid?
We're not obligated to because it's under 75,000.
Okay.
And, and I can make a comment about that. So Garza spent a lot of time with Ryan, going over the scope. That saved us the time of actually having to have plans prepared and basically a whole design to put it out to public bid, which we're under the threshold, so we don't have to. And Garza is one of our trusted contractors and I actually did go back and forth with them a few times and lowered the price a little bit, even though we are under the threshold.
Thank you. For me, so long as the process is lawful, I'm okay.
Absolutely.
And I do want to thank you, Mr. Stewart and Ryan, for prioritizing this.
Okay, Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, so I would like to make a request. First of all, thank you, yes, we need this, I agree with everybody. I would like, we have servers in a lot of different rooms, including the teachers' rooms. Can we make sure we take all those servers out and put it into this room that we're now making room for? And I think, you know...
I know one of them that you're speaking about at B1.
I want it out of there, yes.
I, I agree. I don't know if that's, that would be a good location because it's so far away, it's on the other side of the campus.
No, but I want it out of the classroom.
Yes. I can work with IT and see what we can do. It's not really my forte to see if we, what's available to move it.
Please, because I think at this point, because I think before there was an issue because you didn't know where to put it. And now that we're investing in this, I would like, you could ask the rest of the board, maybe they don't know, there are servers in classrooms and there are servers in other rooms. So can we get everything into this room that we're building specifically?
Well, you wouldn't want it in this room. This would be a secure room for communications.
Well, just the classroom, I don't want the students and the teacher.
A lot of times, these IDF cabinets or rooms are in certain locations because they have to be within a certain distance of the equipment. There's a certain distance you have to be, the, the cable length can't go over 297 feet. So...
So the one, you know what I'm talking about?
I know which one you're talking about. We can find another location, but not this location.
Please, okay, that's fine, just as long as we get it out of the classroom. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you will have the approval, we will vote on it right now, and I'll call for the question. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manichieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabag?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we approve this five and O with one provisional vote also. Okay, another item up here for approval, approval of a proposal for the Beverly Hills High School KBEV studio design with PBWS. I believe we have that in our thing. And I will ask for a motion to approve the proposal for the scope of verification for the new KBEV studio.
I hereby approve to, approve of the, I move to approve the proposal for the BHHS KBEV studio design with PWS Architects.
Thank you.
I will second.
You, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Okay, we will go around again on this. Dr. Stern?
Well, I will say, it sounds like it's been a very, very long time since the design and the general technology for KBEV has been visited and so I'm, I'm pleased to move forward. so I don't have any particular questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cave?
I agree with Dr. Stern, I think this is incredible that we're updating the studio. KBEV is an incredible production, and I think that the students deserve to have that space more updated, so thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I concur with my colleagues, it is an exciting time, it is unfortunate, just because of the, how the public institutions work, that things move a little bit slower than in the private sector, so although we are excited, you know, it's not the timeline that we would like, but I'm glad that we're at this point now, and the sun is upon the horizon, so we keep chugging forward and keep moving.
Thank you. Mrs. Manichari?
Thank you, I'm also super excited to bring the KBEV studio into the twenty-first, almost twenty-second century, and I do think that it's what our community deserves and will be happy to have. I'm grateful that this went out to bid, and it does seem like the PBWS proposal is super reasonable, so thank you for taking the time to do that. I just want to have an understanding that this is a, like, a phase-one part, where this is going to be reviewing the documents, investigating the site, and kind of figuring out what there could be, is that right?
Correct, so this will get us to a point where we can make a decision on moving forward with the project, and how much we would like to spend on the project, and it will give us the ability to make more of an informed decision.
Okay, thank you, and do you have an estimate on timing of, let's say we approve tonight, when we would have the result of this, their work product?
I want to say, if I remember, we planned for four to six weeks on this portion, but with the holidays and depending on how available people are to attend these planning meetings, it could be longer or shorter.
Okay, so hopefully January?
Yes, hopefully end of January.
Thank you, Mrs. Sabag.
Because of the holidays.
Okay, so of course, we want to get KBEV where it needs to be. I personally, I have a problem with this, because as Mrs. Manichari said, fifty-seven thousand, this is only to, this is not, it does not include plans, it does not include engineering, it doesn't include anything, but verifying what we can do, that's it. So I don't know where the other numbers came from, which is outrageous, but this is just to verify what we can and cannot do. Why is the cost so high, with nothing in our concrete, in our hands?
This is a very low cost.
It's low considering the other, I see that, DLR went one-forty-one thousand, HMC went one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
It's our recommendation to approve this, and this is not a high cost.
So let me ask you...
And the reason it's not a high cost is because we're working with Fonder Solari to help us provide some of the services that the other companies aren't providing. This is necessary for us to move forward with the project. We don't know how much the whole project's going to cost, so we need to pay this amount to be able to make sure that we have cost estimates for the project, and we know what we're getting. Without this, we're shooting in the dark.
Okay, so I have a few questions. This company, is this company going to do the plans and engineering, or just the verification?
So we have two options at the end of this phase, we can decide, all right, we have a schematic design and an approved project that we want to pursue, we can open it back up to qualifications again and get proposals, or we can continue with PBWS without having to go for proposals.
So basically, they, do they do the plans and engineering?
Yes.
They do? Okay, so if they do the plans and engineering, and they're charging us the fifty-seven thousand to verify that we can do it, will they subtract that to the plans and engineering, or is this like a separate fee?
I don't want to think of it as subtracting, more like, if we were to just bid this, ask for proposals on a general concept for the full design, this cost would have been rolled into that.
So let me ask you, first of all, thank you so much to Fonder Solari for helping us with this, I did hear that even before. Can I ask, Mr. Amin? I just want to make sure...
Come on down.
Yes, thank you. I want to understand, when you do do projects for the district, do you always, do we always have to pay for somebody to verify everything first before plans and engineering? The reason I'm asking is because, wouldn't it benefit us as a district, if we can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, bring the architect and the engineer to verify everything? Usually, they don't, they don't charge for that, but I understand it might take them time. They want our existing plans, they want to take a look at our existing plans, correct? They want to take a look at the existing space of what we have, and to see what we can actually do structurally, and firstly architectural part. But shouldn't that be part of their scope of doing plans and engineering, so they can get us to that part? I understand maybe we cannot do certain things, so they don't want to waste their time, that is why they're charging us, right?
So first of all, this is an architectural firm, so all three companies that provided the price, they are architectural engineering firms. To answer your question is yes and no, the condition of this building, because of the age, has a lot of unknowns, so it needs to be some sort of verification, and also DSA dictates some extra verifications when you are working on modernization project. For example, they have to verify the path of travel to this portion of the building that we are verifying. So regardless, you are going to pay for this initial study, the outcome of this, either you use PBWS or any other architect, is going to be basically fed to your design. So you are paying this fee, yes, but even if you hired an architect right now for the full services, you are going to be paying the same amount as part of their service.
And can I ask you, have you worked with PBWS?
Yes, yes.
You have, okay, so you've worked with them before, you've done it this way, and it's come to your liking, what their verification was, because how much, because let's say, for instance, they're charging us fifty-seven thousand, which is great, significantly less than the other companies, but what if their plans and engineering are more? Like, how could we even know that at this point? Do you see what I'm saying?
We can recompete at that time.
We can.
Again, we are not obligated to utilize them, we can just get the report that they are going to provide...
Got it.
And invite more architects again at that time, and say, we are designing this based on this criteria that's now defined, so give us your price for full design of this modernization project.
Okay, thank you for that. So basically, this is the correct procedure to have somebody verify everything, and you do need to pay for that?
Yes, regardless, if, again, because it's a modernization, if it was like a brand-new building, you wouldn't need that step.
It would be different.
It would be totally different. Because of the age of the facility, and things that surround the project, when you have a DSA project, this is the best way of doing that, rather than hiring somebody to design something that you may or may not be able to build because of the cost. So this is going to also help...
So that comes to another question, thank you for that, I appreciate that. I just have one more question. The existing area of KBEV, would it be more beneficial to put KBEV in a new area, and then we don't have to go through all this, because it's part of the new building?
Which building?
I'm not sure if we have, but that's why I'm asking, because we have new buildings. Do we have, because I did see storage buildings, but maybe it's not large enough. Instead of going through this, because let's say we're spending the fifty-seven thousand, they go in there, and they tell us, I'm sorry, you can't do what you want to do, because...
You can't do what you want to do, there is no way that somebody can tell us you can't do...
No, because it's old, and it's not going to hold.
Yeah, it's just a matter of designing to the criteria that's being defined, that's going to be within the budget that you have, so that's also going to be part of their services.
And we don't have any other building we can move KBEV to?
Not that I'm aware of, that you have a location for this, so...
Yeah, even if you were to move it, we'd still want to do all the upgrades to make it a full studio, not just have a...
No, absolutely, but as he was saying, that if it was a new, we wouldn't have to verify as much, we could go to the plans and engineering right away.
Right, if we were building a new structure.
But he means a brand-new building, we don't have a brand-new building.
Yeah, I don't think you have any other location quite, right, not that I'm aware of, that has the same...
And not a brand-new building that would be appropriate, considering KBEV is a class, and a lot of different folks are coming and going.
Yeah.
One of the benefits of this location is not only that it's big, and you might not even realize how big it is...
No, I saw it, yeah.
...because only one part of it has been used in recent history, but also I think the locality of it, this is prime real estate.
Yeah, just as long as...
Sorry, going back to Mr. Stewart's comment about the timing, the reason that it took time, because we were talking to four different architects, what would be the best way of approaching what you want, they all told us that this is the best way of doing that, so at least you are going to get best for your buck.
So that answers my question, so exactly, so we're doing this first phase, which means just verifying everything and seeing what we can and cannot do, and this does not include plans or engineering, we still have to pay for plans and architectural plans, engineering, and get to that stage for the permits.
But it does include design consultation, and in my opinion, that's very relevant, because the design consultation will help Amin, and will go back and bring us some sort of an estimate.
But they're not going to have anything concrete to look at.
They are going to come with some sort of schematic conceptual, it's like renderings, for example.
They will have renderings, because I saw there's no rendering included.
They are going to provide some sort of conceptual criteria, that we can hire our architect, or utilize that based on the need of the project.
Well, it says exclusions.
What it says...
We already have renderings from the last person who we hired.
But we're not going to be using the renderings.
You're right, their rendering is excluded, but they are going to provide conceptual criteria that will be utilized for the basis of the design.
Yeah, they're just going to give a game plan, that's what they're going to do.
Look in B, scope of work, during the project scoping phase, which is what this phase is, our design team will develop narratives, diagrams, and other materials to support the preparation of a cost model. This process will also include conversations with stakeholders and users to confirm, not only the technical outfitting needs of the studios, but also how BHHS intends to use them.
And not only that, sorry, meeting with that other company, that they are more technical into the studio, so somebody needs to basically marry this concept to a design, and they will take care of that portion also.
I mean, what you said before makes a lot of sense, it's like, you're saying that we have to go with this route in order, you know, because all the exclusions is a lot, everything basically, ADA, structural, fire sprinklers, like, nothing is included.
They are not going to design any of that.
That's architecture, yeah.
Yes, so that's what I want everybody on the board to understand, this is only to verify what we can do. So we're going, after this, they're going to come back...
Yes.
And give us a bid on the architectural, engineering, and getting the permit to...
They are going to give a proposal for the cost of design, and we can just make that a competition and get more than one.
Yes, so this timeline you said for the verification is how long?
I don't remember, but I think it's, if I remember...
Four to six weeks, let's say?
Yeah, it's eight weeks, I think, if I remember correctly.
Okay, and then, can we, can we please make sure, since we're starting from scratch, that we have timelines in the contract, and they can stick to, you know, remember how we spoke before, just to make sure that if KBEV is going to, yeah, so let's say the architectural is going to be ready at such and such date.
Definitely, yeah.
Engineering, and DSA, DSA is different.
All of your contracts has, like, that concept date that they have to finish, all of your current contracts.
Okay, yeah, so, and then the construction part of it, of course, okay, yes, thank you.
The ones Fonder Solari has procured.
Okay, thank you so much, much appreciated.
I hope I can say a few words now. Number one, I agree with Mr. Stewart about this being a long time in coming, and I know that our students have been sort of in limbo as far as the, working with the KBEV, they've been doing a great job under the circumstances, and the only thing that bothers me is, it's going still a long way away before this will be finished, and that, I feel very hurt for the students, because those are the ones that eventually will reap the benefits of this. So I see this as still being quite a ways away with all the things that have to be done. I know when I saw this with, when I set the agenda, I had tremendous number of questions on this about the way it was going and so on, I've been reassured a lot about the contract, and reading this contract itself is very, very well-written, I mean, I think it has, there's like, they've completed everything in there that would be needed for this particular phase of the construction of the KBEV studio. So I just want to say that I'm glad that it's not more than it is, I'm sorry that it doesn't include more than it should, but that it would carry us over to other phases, but it doesn't, and so with that in mind, if nobody has any further comment, I would like to call for the question.
Okay, one more question or comment, where does it say not to exceed the fifty-seven thousand on the contract? I don't see it, I see that it has the hourly rates, but I don't see not to exceed.
This is not the contract, this is...
This is not the contract?
No, this is the proposal of the architectural firm.
And it says a lump sum, it says a lump sum fee, so it's...
Item J.
What's that, I'm sorry?
J, item J.
On item J, it says a lump sum fee.
So...
But as I mentioned before, we take these proposals, and we enter our own, use our own template, contract, template, and we prepare an agreement based on that.
We convert it to a basically design services agreement.
Okay, so the, everything their hourly rate and everything, they've already considered that, and this is how much we're going to pay, and that's it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, I would like to call for the question, assuming there are no more comments. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Manichari?
Yes.
Mr. Sabag?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes, and it both passes five and oh with the one vote for provisional. Okay, that brings us...
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Wow, we have now arrived at the student board member, are waiting for you, Ms. Cave.
My favorite time. Ms. Austin, can I share my screen? Sorry, one sec. Alrighty. Okay, this is the student board report for November eighteenth. Okay, so first, we have BHHS Color Wars, this was earlier this month, and of course, the seniors won, but ASB basically just hosted Color Wars, which they do every year, and it's just a battle of the grade levels, so each grade has a different color, and basically, ASB plans various activities for the grades to compete in, and ultimately, the seniors came out on top, which they do basically every year. But I think everyone had fun, and that's the whole senior class in the center. And here are just some more pictures of the event, there was a fabulous turnout. Okay, next, we have the ASB Fall Blood Drive, so this is a blood drive that ASB hosts with UCLA Health, and basically, ASB is in charge of collecting at least sixty donors from the school and the community to donate blood, and each person saves three lives, so this is a huge deal for us, and we have one per semester, so that's two in a school year, and there was a great turnout, there were over sixty donors, actually, so we exceeded our count, and it was very successful, so we just have some pictures, I think like, only one person passed out, so that's a win. Yeah, last year, we had like, like, seven people pass out, so like, it's really scary, but this was fine. Okay, next, there were Color Wars Participation Donuts, so ASB tries to get as many students to participate in our events as possible, and to do that, we like to incentivize and reward our students for attending. So in this case, we did award our students with donuts, and everyone loved that, so that was that. Next, we have the MSA Cedar Sinai Simulation Center, so basically, MSA is the Medical Science Academy at the high school, and they spent their class period going to the simulation at Cedar Sinai, and they were actually in a staged operating room, and they were operating with, yeah, and they were operating with professionals on like, different techniques, and different ways to go about various procedures, and this is just a really unique experience that, like, no other, well, I don't know, no other, but like, most schools don't offer this, and so this is pretty amazing, and I think this really speaks to our programs and the opportunities that we have for our students, and the fact that they utilize their opportunities for great things like this, I think it's really commendable. Next, we have the ASB Imagination Campus, and this was at Disneyland, we were actually there yesterday in the pouring rain. Yeah, it was a bummer, but we still had a lot of fun, and ASB goes to Disneyland every single year for this Imagination Campus, like, tour thing, and basically, the students who go on this field trip have an instructor who works at Disneyland, kind of guide them through everything that Disneyland does in terms of leadership and spirit, and this is just a great way for the students to kind of like, take what they learn and implement it into the student body, and like, the way that we run ASB, and of course, we did have fun with the rides and the food and everything, so that's a plus. Then we have the Little Women and the Salter opening, I spelled opening wrong, but I was actually here on the opening night, but I came a little bit late, but it was still a fabulous show, and I'm just so proud of everyone who is in theater, and everyone behind the scenes, the whole production was amazing, and the Salter looks beautiful, it's polished, and everything went really smoothly. This is a little bit funny, because this is no longer a home opener, this is actually... This is a little bit funny because this is no longer a home opener. This is actually an away game now. So the varsity basketball team was supposed to have their home opening game. Yeah, it was, they were supposed to have their home opening game today, but it got moved and they had to go away. So we'll update you all when the home game actually does happen. But yeah. And then of course, we had our second BHF meeting of the year and Colby was our guest. So give it up for Colby.
Colby!
I wasn't there sadly because I was on the field trip. This was yesterday, right? Yeah, it was yesterday. But Colby gave an amazing presentation. Basically, the Leadership Academy is a branch of teen BHF and the Leadership Academy has people from across the district, administrators, different people in like higher power positions come in and give talks during the VHF meetings and it just informs the students on what's going on, like who's running things behind the scenes. And it's like a great way for the kids to learn about like what's around them and the opportunities that they have. So thank you, Colby, again for coming. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go around and have comments. Dr. Stern?
No, just thank you very much. Looks good.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Well done.
Mrs. Manichieri?
Thank you. I so love having you as a member of this board and I really thank you for reminding us of every, all this amazing stuff that's happening and all the hard work that our staff and our students put in every day to make BHUSD a great place. It's really nice to be reminded. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Charlotte, for a really great report. And I have to say, in regards to the blood drive, we had a very special person donate his blood out of my request. We had a superstar that came in and guess who it was?
Doctor Chernus.
I said to Doctor Chernus, I go, can you donate your blood? And he's like.
Is he the one that passed out?
Actually, it was in text. No, it was actually in text and I thought he would say no and I was already prepared to like really push him. And he was like, yes. And I'm like, oh my gosh, we got Doctor Chernus. And then I was there with him. I brought my older son also donated his blood.
I have officially donated my blood, sweat and tears to this district.
So he was so adorable laying in that chair and I had no idea that people faint. And I actually thought donating your blood, because I had no idea. I thought it was just like, you know, a tube. This is a pint.
Yeah, it's a whole pint.
It's a pint. And how long was it? It was, you had to sit there for a long ti, I felt so bad.
He got a.
He got a, they had.
They have a lot of snacks.
A lot of snacks. And you can eat so that you don't faint.
Orange juice.
Orange juice, yes. And my older son donated his blood. So it was very sweet. So thank you, Doctor Chernus. I'm, he just saved three lives.
Yeah, he did that.
I, I saw Doctor Stern, I mean, Doctor Chernus before he went, he was just going and I said, I reminded him to make sure he ate afterwards. So as a mother who would, what to do, a Jewish mother worried about their little kids. So I would just like to tell you, I love the report.
Wait, I'm not finished.
Oh, I thought you were finished.
No, she said a lot of things and I want to highlight all the things that she said. So the Cedar Sinai, I want to say thank you to Cedar Sinai and I want to say that we really need to get more businesses involved so our students can do this. So the assimilation, from what I understand, was like a dummy in the operation room and it was pretty serious, right? I don't know if they ended up killing the dummy or the dummy survived, but I would really like to know that. So I'd like to get more. How do we, we'll figure it out, right, Dr. Seaman?
Yeah, no, this is our third year partnering with Cedar Sinai and so we take our Keppstone MSA students 10 times. So we.
10 times?
10 times.
Love it.
So we pay for 10 labs and so we bring them and they do things from, and it's all, all these SIM labs are where they teach and train their onboarding doctors. So when a doctor is hired to Cedars, they have to go through a series of trainings throughout these simulation labs prior to actually taking the floor. And so our kids actually get to be trained by those trainers that are bringing on actual real doctors that are being hired by Cedars. And so it's a really great opportunity for us.
Did you say, do we have to pay for it? Is that what you said?
We do.
Oh, I thought Cedar Sinai like just volunteers and, and helps us out.
No, unfortunately, but I still love you because Cedars, because it comes at a very discounted rate for us.
Okay.
But yes, we do have to pay. We utilize our CTE funds to cover the costs of the SIM labs.
Got it.
And transportation.
So I also wanted to highlight the saltier ribbon cutting and our culinary students, they made treats and it was delicious. It was really good. So that was exciting. And then the actors, all the students, I don't know how they remembered their lines. It was unbelievable. They were so good. So I'll let Mrs. Marcus continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I would love to, I, the turnout of the kids at the Color War, do you get, as the year goes on from freshman through the senior, do you get more kids from freshmen to seniors, juniors, I mean sophomores and so on? Is it, I would think that the seniors have the biggest turnout.
Yeah, they do, for sure.
Yeah, I, it's interesting that there's more esprit de corps as they move up in the.
Yeah, I mean, it's like your last everything. So all the seniors always want to join all of the activities.
Okay, and I, I, I just want to tell you that I, of course, was at the play and I was at the opening of the Salter Theater. And I have to tell you, that staging that they did was done by the kids. They were the ones that designed it, got it ready. The fact that the stage was moving around and the way that they incorporate was just an amazing job. And not only is the theater about acting, but it's about behind the scenes that counts, the costuming and so on. And, and for that, these, these kids are to be really, the teachers that work with them and so on are to be really complimented. They did a fantastic job. So, and the show was wonderful. So, and I think if there's no other comment on this, we will now move to the superintendent report. Dr. Sherman, I mean, Dr. Chernus.
Thank you, President Marcus, members of the school board. It continues to be an eventful and successful school year for our students and our staff. And so one of the things I'd love to share with you first is the fact that, and I know the data is very small, but the, the theme here is that our AP scores are going up. And so not just our scores are going up, but the student participation is going up. And so that's something that was part of our strategic plan last year. It was a goal of ours to increase participation and scores. And so we're seeing both of that happen in our district. So we're very proud of that. I had a chance to visit our team right before the second round of the CIF playoffs. So our girls were ready to go and it was, it was, it was a really great moment because the, the team honored their seniors before the event and they made posters and it's, it was just a great opportunity to see our kids excel. And they got to plan a new facility on our new courts, which was, which was really good. So kudos to our girls tennis team. Yeah, Charlotte said, a great event, the opening of Salter, one of many, many more openings to come. And I hope to, to come see the play, hopefully Sunday. I had a, a great opportunity to speak at Rotary yesterday. I'm now a Rotarian in Beverly Hills, which is a tremendous honor. And I want to thank President Marcus and Vice President Manichieri for coming. We talked about our school district. We talked about how well we're doing as a school district. And you have in that room, third, some even fourth generation Beverly Hills families. So it's, it's, it's humbling and, and to be able to speak to them, they really care about our schools. And we talked about not just the current scope of education, but we talked about the future and we talked about, I'm glad we're actually discussing AI because that came up as well. And I discussed how, I talked about future jobs that no longer exist and how we're trying to pair our kids for, I'm sorry, past jobs that no longer exist and how we're trying to prepare our kids for future jobs that have yet to be created. And so that's important for me, it's important for our school district to continue to invest in tools to make sure our students are prepared as best we can prepare them for the future. And so it was a great event. I want to thank Colby for finding the 1942 High School Graduation Yearbook where I found my Uncle Johnny, who's the captain of the tennis team. And so, right, so a few things about this. He was not only the captain, but there was the B games where he participated as well. But the other thing I want to say, because this is November and we, we did honor our veterans, all these kids here, these seniors after high school, like my Uncle Johnny, they went off to World War II. And our kids today, our high school students would never dream of, you know, going into battle right after high school. Some, some of them, of course, do serve in the military, which is amazing. But it was a different time and we are so thankful to our veterans for everything we have today. And even some of these students went off to war and didn't come home. And I'm very fortunate that my Uncle Johnny did come back. But, you know, this was a year before he was serving in Europe in World War II. And to me, that, that's incredible. We are in break next week, so we'll have school on Monday and Tuesday and then we wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I want to again go back and thank Rotary. We'll be putting together some meals for needy families tomorrow and giving those to, to students, families that are in need. And we hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. That's, as usual, very complete and very nice. I will start with Ms., Dr. Stern to, if you have a comment?
Thank you, Dr. Chernus. Very interesting about your, your uncle in the yearbook. Wow, that was really cool. And congratulations on being a Rotarian. I'm sorry that I had missed it. I was told by several members that you would be speaking and I very much wanted to go, but I'm here. Anyway, thank you for being a positive person and representative for our district and that's all. And thanks for giving blood.
Ms. Cave?
I just want to highlight the girls tennis team, the varsity tennis team. I can't believe I didn't put it in my report, but I have really good friends on that team and I just want to express how proud I am of them because they work so, so hard and they are really a great team. So, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Wonderful report as always.
Manichieri?
Thank you. Also, I want to highlight the ladies tennis team. We've had a new coach the last couple of years who took our gentleman Normans through almost to the end of CIF last year. And it's great to see that this year, the lady Normans made it to CIF. And so that really does show that great coaches matter and that our students are amazing and they gravitate towards good leadership. And so it's something that we really, we really value and appreciate. With regard to the Rotary meeting on Monday, I am really glad that I was able to make it. And I do want to commend you, Dr. Chernus, no notes other than a few slides. And you presented and represented our school district, the board and our entire faculty with such grace and authenticity. You took a lot of questions from the floor and you answered in such a simple, straightforward and honest way that everybody came up to me afterwards and commended you on that. And I will say that the three times that, in my opinion, I have witnessed you shine the most have been in these group situations where you're given the opportunity to just be yourself and put your vision out there. And the first was when we were here with the leadership team, the second was on the staff welcome back day, and this was the third. And so it's, it's nice to continue to get to know you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, I agree. First of all, your report was outstanding and you are a very well-articulated speaker. And I'm sorry that I missed it. I, I heard how wonderful it was. And I would also like to say, in regards to the, the tennis, the women's tennis, do we do home games on our new facility?
Yes.
Yes.
That's fantastic. So if anybody didn't see it, that, the facility is gorgeous. It's, it's so professional. It's so befitting our school. So I'm really proud of that. And I wanted to, to say in regards to your Uncle Johnny, which, what a wonderful name, Uncle Johnny, 1942, we actually have a plaque of the fallen of Beverly Hills High School seniors that didn't come back. I, I took a picture of that and that's like exactly what you said. Like, can you imagine what they went through? They were here in Beverly Hills having the most beautiful time of their lives, graduating, and then they're all just shuttled off, recruited or how, how do you call it? Not even.
Drafted.
Drafted. Like, we don't, we're not even used to that, you know? They were drafted. They had no choice. They had to go. If you don't go, you go to prison. So they had to go to war. And that's amazing. So thank you for, for finding that. And that gives me chills. So thank you for your report.
I just want to echo what Mrs. Manichieri said about the Rotary presentation. I was thrilled to be able to support you and join you and I thank you for asking me to do that. I really, I was most impressed by, same things that Judy, you know, Mrs. Manichieri said about the ease with which you presented this and without the notes and so on. And I really thought you did an outstanding job of fielding the questions. There were a couple pretty good ones there that really, I mean, you had to be pretty alert with them and you were right on, right on with them. So I really appreciate that. And most of the comments made by my colleagues have already been said, but I, I know that you went to give blood. I, I would love to be able to still be able to do that because I remember when I was much, much younger and I used to go to, at the college, when I was in college, I used to go to everyone they used to had. And then at the very end, unfortunately, they were no longer, they, something happened and they, I couldn't give it. But I, I remember many years later, someone in my family needed blood and I went and they asked if you've ever had blood. And you could then at that time, you banked your blood. And the blood that I had given was able to be used so that they were not charged for it in surgery following that time. So I know that it's very important, if you can, to give that blood because you never know when it's going to be needed. So thank you for doing your community service. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item. I'm going to take a little bit of a break. Mrs. Manichieri, will you start the discussion, please?
Okay, thank you, everyone. And here, I'll turn this off. Okay, let's move on to the next item regarding the AI. Can I please get a motion to approve it so we can hold our discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, any second. Thank you. Dr. Stern, is, was this your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours. What's on your mind?
Okay, thank you. So there's a little bit of an echo, but I'm going to try to ignore it. You know, I was listening tonight to our vision statement and one of the things that's nicely mentioned is that we, you know, we're raising children and guiding them amongst a com, a complex and changing world. Well, that's a real understatement and one of the biggest.
Uh-oh. Trustee Stern, I think your Wi-Fi might be glitching.
Most dynamic elements in our society is artificial pace. When I brought forth this resolution, this resolution in 2023, 24, it was after an unfortunate incident. incident at our middle school that involved some AI misuse. And I, we came to find out that multiple schools in other districts were also going through this. It was an intersection between advanced artificial intelligence means as well as the developmental levels of some of the children. But now I bring this forward again because I know that there have been more developments in this field of AI. And some are, are so...
Trustee Stern, we're losing you. Shoot. Colby, do you know if that's, that's not on our side, right?
Yeah. And another thing is that when we talk untrued, rather than just, yeah, I think that the internet is coming in and out.
Yes.
So I want to thank Dr. Seaman, who was able to furnish and point me in the direction of some of the guidelines we have that can serve as guardrails as we, as we go through this journey of artificial intelligence and how it will and can be both a benefit as well as a possible matter to be very cautious with as we proceed. So if we could now go to the policy, and I would love to discuss some of the existing recommendations from CSBA. Also, if there are recommendations from colleagues, I'm going to talk more slowly in case there's echoing.
We're okay. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So basically, I like this, this policy as recommended from CSBA. And the only things that I wanted to add was to tighten up the language a little bit because as I started, when I introduced this tonight, is that I am concerned, for those of you out there, there is, who don't know this, there is an app that has come on the horizon in which, I'll give an example. Let's say you take a picture of your Uncle Mikey, and you could, just by typing in the prompt, say, take this picture of Uncle Mikey and put him running the, the marathon in, in LA. And it can create a whole video that, to the untrained eye, actually looks quite compelling. So it doesn't take a genius to see the potential misuses of this particular app, which I won't, I'm just going to suggest that we tighten up some of the language. And that would include, hold on a second, going to item number three. Item number three currently reads...
She's reading item number three right now. That's correct. Mandy, we're having a hard time hearing you. I know, it's not so bad. Uh-oh, I think we may have lost her.
Should we move on to other board comments? And maybe she can come back in.
Yes, but I do think it's a good idea for her to hear our comments. Mrs. Marcus, unfortunately, Mandy's connection is unstable, so she keeps going in and out. Maybe we need to table this one unless we can get her to stop glitching.
This one requires an approval, so I think that we maybe need to wait and see if she comes back in and maybe move into the other items, the last item on there before we...
Okay. Hi, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Hi, we lost you again.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm sure I rambled on quite a bit. Basically, I wanted to just insert some of these amazing documents that I didn't realize we already had, that are pretty, pretty relatively recent, that should be mentioned. So for number three, if we could just mention under what is there, as well as in compliance with BHHS academic honesty policy. And acceptable use policy of AI. Thank you. So these documents that I looked at really pretty comprehensively cover some of my fears. And also, this policy will direct the reader to some of the more comprehensive, let's say prohibitions and recommendations. So I think that's good. And then my only other suggestion, and I also want to hear what my colleagues think, is that for number four, if we could add right after what is there for number four, irresponsible and prohibited use of AI includes, but is not limited to impersonating or misusing other people's personal information or likeness. And I want to remind everyone that there are people who are adults who may come across these tools and do some things that are against what we, you know, what is ethical. There's also kids. It's very tempting because these things can look so credible and real. So I really wanted to mention this, and I'm glad that we were given the opportunity to alert everyone about these potentially incredible tools. But as they are new, we need to be on top of this. I also would just like to say that it is my hope that within the next year or five years that we develop a robust AI task force or committee because there are a lot of amazing things that AI can do. But it must exist parallel to guardrails that make sense and protect our learners. Thank you. I don't know if you guys are there. Okay, they're there.
I have no further comments other than I think this is an important topic to touch on. And this is also a sensitive topic, and I think it's important that we address it to the full extent.
Thank you.
Also, Board of Education, there are some handouts that are at the dais for you. The first and foremost, in, in one of the recommended, recommendations around the language where Dr. Stern had mentioned potentially adding to number three, the BHHS academic honesty policy and acceptable use policy. In the Norman Guide already, listed on page 35, so what we did was we just took a photocopy of that page. Two years ago, we, we have an AI task force within the district that we meet. We meet with our principals. We meet with our instructional technology coaches, the technology team themselves. Our next meeting actually is on December 9th. We also meet with Inspire, which is the MIT, Harvard, and Stanford grad, postgraduates that helped us utilize and launch the AI bootcamp this summer for our students. They help kind of supervise our work and talk us through. But this was, we, we had brought this to the board in 23, '24 for, just to notify the community of, you know, the regulations and procedures in which we train students in acceptable use. In addition, there's a poster that's hung up in every classroom. That way, students and teachers can refer to and help teach and train students on just what are those appropriate uses, you know, because we want them to be able to leverage AI. We want them to utilize it as a tool. I think a lot of us agree up here on the dais that it's a very powerful tool used correctly. And so that's there. In addition to, you have two packets. One is just again, a tool guide that we utilize to help train teachers on, on use and misuse of how to help identify that and work with their students and teach and train their students. In addition to how to, how to, actual lesson plans on how to deliver that conversation within the classroom. So there's a couple of different resources, and we are constantly trying to stay updated on this. And so we're always looking for feedback, but not having a policy in place before, these are all procedural measures that we've had. I think it's a great idea from a board perspective for you guys to beat this up a little bit and potentially give us some protection.
Can I ask you, Dr. Seaman, or should we go around the horn?
We're going to go around.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Stewart.
Thank you so much. I have a prepared statement that was based on just the original policy that was in the agenda. I did not have these things in front of me, so some of those things might be covered. But I, I just want to start by saying that I support having a policy. I support safety, privacy, ethics, and clear rules. I agree that we must protect our students. At the same time, we also have a duty to prepare them for the world that they are walking into, not the one that we grew up in. So I want to share how I see this policy and what I believe is missing. Right now, this policy is safe and neutral, but it does not set any clear goals for student learning, for teacher support, and real innovation. It reads like a document that protects the system, not one that leads change. Yes, we need ethical guardrails, but we also need a plan for how AI can help students learn faster, learn deeper, and learn in ways that match how the world works now. AI is not a trend. It is already part of every major career field. Our students will enter the world where AI is built into medicine, law, engineering, finance, government, media, and security. They should not just be told what they cannot do with AI. They should be taught how to use it with good judgment, critical thinking, and responsibility. A modern school district cannot treat AI the same way that we treated calculators when they were new. This policy mentions risk and ethics, privacy and rules, which is totally fine. But it does not mention goals, timelines, skill outcomes, or teacher workload support. It does not mention tutoring access, translation help, reading support, or special education tools. It does not mention pilot programs or research partnerships. It does not mention how we measure success or what student skills we expect by graduation. A strong AI policy should include three things. First, safety and, and ethics. Second, equal access for all students. And third, a plan for real improvement in teaching and learning. That includes teaching training that focuses not only on what to avoid, but on how to use AI in reading, writing, math, language, research, and career pathways. We should allow controlled pilot programs so our teachers can test tools and share all of the results. We should train students to think, not to copy. We should give teachers tools that reduce a busy workload and increase time with students. We should explore how AI can support students who struggle with reading, writing, speech, and comprehension. We should look at how AI can help with translation for families and help students with IEP needs. Our district should not settle for a basic policy that only tells us how to stay out of trouble. We should adopt a policy that builds skill, creativity, and opportunity. We should be a district who leads, not by being the ones who only have students who want to be a part of it, but we are innovating it. So my request is simple. Keep the ethical values, but expand the policy to include real goals, pilot programs, student skill outcomes, teacher training and plans, and research partnerships. It's not about hype. It's about staying competitive in education and the career fields of tomorrow. Our students deserve a district that leads, not one that reacts. AI is not going anywhere, and we should not treat it like a threat. We should treat it like a tool, like literacy, like technology, and like preparation for real life. If we want to set clear goals, realistic goals, we cannot protect students and also prepare them for the actual future that's coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. Mrs. Manichari.
Thank, thank you so much, Dr. Stern. I'm really glad that you brought this topic up because it's been on my mind as well. So I agree with you wholeheartedly there that it's quite relevant. And student board member Cave agrees as well. Trustee Stewart, I had a very similar response as you did, and it took me into another realm when I read this. I recall the incident that brought us to the resolution regarding safe digital citizenry, and I'm glad that we put it up. And then after that, Dr. Seaman, I recall that you added guardrails into the Norman Handbook, which probably should make their way into the Bulldog Handbook these days as My concern with the proposal of this board policy is that it really is, is just the tip of the iceberg.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think that we as a board are tasked with, as Dr. Sternus always says, you know, preparing our students for the jobs that are not even out there as of today. And so for me, I, the proposal as written is a little, for lack of a better description, is a little too guardrail-y. And it doesn't include enough vision for me. And I think that we can do both. In terms of the guardrails, I could be wrong, but we probably already have a lot of other board policies which talk about cheating or, or different kinds of guardrails that are, that say, you know, as per social media or any other modes. And so I feel like the guardrails are probably already there in other ways that could be applicable to AI. I don't mind doing them again, but I would really like to have a conversation about what's our vision and our plan for AI. Can we turn BHUSD into, just like we are with our command center and our security system, into leaders in our industry? And as Mr. Stewart always says to me, are you using AI? Are you harnessing its full potential? And that's the opportunity that I want to provide our staff and our students. I, I don't want to, I don't want to make a policy based on fear. I want to make a policy based on potential. And so I, I actually thought that I'd love to have, if the rest of the board agrees with this, to form, to create a community-wide BHUSD AI task force.
Yes, that's what I was agreeing to.
Right? So that we can, and this came up in, in Rotary. And actually, Dr. Sternus, I failed to mention to you, there is a, a member of the Beverly Hills Rotary who I consider a friend of mine. His name is Franklin Urtuaga. And he created a number of medical devices and a number of apps that are not medically related. And he shared with me, I think he was the Secretary of Technology or something like that, under the Clinton administration. And he shared that at that time, he couldn't even get any colleagues to come and listen to what the internet was about. And, and here we are now. And so AI is, is going to be in 20 years what the internet is to us today. Right? And so can, can we get a, a board consensus that this is something that as a school district, we'd like to establish and move forward? I, I mean, I would volunteer to be on that. I'd be happy for any of my colleagues to join on that. But I, I think that, let's take this to the next level. This is something that I think the, the city, the state, and the country should look to BHUSD and say, they really got it right. Wow, they, they jumped into the deep end.
Thank you very much. Mrs., before I go on, Mrs. Sabag, I'm going to call on Dr. Sternus, and then I'll come back.
No.
Okay.
I'll defer to Mrs. Sabag first.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Media has to speak, that's why. Go ahead, Mrs. Sabag.
Okay, so I want to thank Mr. Stewart and...
Okay, so I want to thank Mr. Stewart and Mrs. Manichari. I agree wholeheartedly. And I'd like to delve into the real world of BHUSD since I have, you know, two kids in the district. The situation that we have with AI is AI is not what it used to be when it started. And the problem, the situation, Dr. Seaman, I, I'd like to know what you, what all of you think about this. So the problem that we have is that we have our educators kind of, let's say they have an assignment, right? So they give the assignment, everything's done on the computer. We can't, I feel, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't handcuff our children and tell them, do not use AI. Either you have them write it the traditional way and you check their work like it used to be, or you assign an assignment where they're typing it and they're researching online, and they just might use AI, because what's happening is the teachers are saying, they're reprimanding them for using AI. And the students are saying, I did not use AI. Some of them didn't, and it looks like they did, because they're pretty intelligent also. So it's a very, very tough way of correcting assignments by telling your students, go ahead and do this assignment, do it at home, send it in. You know what I'm talking about, right? So I'd like to do something where there's no more reprimanding, and as both of my colleagues said, there's no more wrong way. The other, because AI is so different right now, you need to be critically thinking to use AI. If you want something to, for a report, it depends what you are putting into the program in order for it to spit out a report. So I think our students need to be graded upon how they do the report. So let's say if you want something simple like how to build a door, and you just say, how do you build a door? And you don't give any details, your report's going to look bad. No matter if you use AI or not, it's going to, it's going to give you very small details on how to build that door. If you sit there and be articulate about it and, and give AI all the details of what you want, and then you put it in your report, I think our instructional teachers need to understand, this is the world we live in. You need to grade the students according to the report that they just used. How, how do you base that on, you know, copying or cheating or anything like that? If you want them to write it out, that's, that's different. So I think that's a fine line, and I think that we need to change. And we need to start changing things on how we grade our students. Would you agree, Dr. Seaman?
I think too, there's a fine line between what you're asking and then also what some of our community would say. I think that we, if you look at just our, our process of where we say acceptable use of our AI process, we do encourage the assistance, the brainstorming ideas, editing their work, practicing language. But we also, on the flip side, as educators, also have access to AI detectors. So there, there's this dance that we have to also understand.
My question is, they are going to use AI once you send it home to them. If you don't want them to use AI, have them do it in the classroom, have them write it out.
I'm going to rephrase it in ways that we could all understand up here. So I did grow up with Google, and so I too would do the research. I would utilize Google or even an encyclopedia. And you would get in trouble for writing the encyclopedia. You can use it for research, but then draft it into your own words. What some of the teachers are asking students to do is to create, create, they can use AI to do the research and support their research, but then put it into your own words. It's just like we wrote in a blue book or do a presentation, so.
So let me ask you. Okay, so a lot of students, what I've seen, a lot of students do do it themselves. They use the research, and they're still getting charged that they are copying it. Yes. And, and even if you have the detectors, I don't know how the teacher can prove it, because she's not showing anything. They're just saying, you used AI. So we need to make sure that we can figure that out. Yeah.
How do we help everybody involved? The teachers want the students to be authentic, and I understand that. And the students are going in that direction. And to your point, I remember when we were kids and we were doing a project or a report on something, we were allowed to check out two books from the library and use that portion of, and I remember my parents bought Encyclopedia Britannica, and everyone would come to my house. But also you were required to provide citations. And so I think that I don't blame the teachers for wanting the students to generate the thought, to generate the verbiage. Plagiarism is an old concept. It's not, this is the new version of it, you know? They still could go online and cut and paste from online. So the quest, the question is, does the curriculum have to become more project-based? To your point, does the computer need to get closed and then the students have to handwrite more? We have to regress in some ways? You know, I think the conversation could go on. And to Mr. Stewart's point, the teachers need support on this.
Yes. Just one minute, Dr. Stern.
Yeah.
Are you finished?
Well, I just wanted to ask, what exactly did you mean by task force? What would that entail?
I think we need a, maybe like a four or six-week roundtable where perhaps, just like the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, Dr. Chernus could put out the bat signal, and he could invite members of the community who have AI contacts, AI information, and AI resources. And, you know, once, once a month for four months is going to take a long time. Maybe every Monday or every other Monday for a couple of weeks, we hold a session where other people bring information to us. And then as a, and then whoever are those two board members that are on the task force will come back and present the information and make suggestions. I mean, do we need an AI director? Do we need AI teachers? What do we need? What's out there?
Well, I think that AI is going to be used in every single classroom, so that's, that's a situation we need to figure out.
So my only suggestion is, let's crowdsource on this.
Okay, can we speak to, Dr. Chernus, please?
Yeah, I'm glad we brought this up. This is something that we're going to have to have considerable discussion and investment in. And so I'm, I look forward to future discussions about it. We may even want to have a study session in the future about AI and how we implement this in our schools. Personally, I would love to have an AI academy or an AI program. And I want Beverly Hills to be at the forefront of AI in public education. I met with the Executive Director of AI in Riverside County. He came here. I toured the schools with him. And even recently, as, as recently as yesterday, one of my former students here at Hawthorne, who is now a graduate in computer science from Berkeley, and, and is knowledgeable in that realm. And so I think our community has a lot of smart people that are willing to help. And so I think that this is something that we should, we should agendize and go into more depth on in the future.
Okay, I'd like to just say a few words about this, and I agree. I really appreciated Mr. Stewart's statement about delving deeper into this and what it should be and so on. As to a, a committee, we can start right where we are here with Mr. Seaman and the group and maybe expand on that group that he already has and bring it in with more community members and, and so on. And I thought about that as being a stepping stone to increasing where we are with that and forming some sort of an AI academy here at our, in our school district. I, in the meantime, what are we going to do with, we have this policy in front of us. Are we going to improve, approve this policy and then take it, bring it back at another time? Or are we going to just not pass it and do the work after? Yeah, I don't know that. I would, I personally think that this sets the, the bottom line for it. And if from this, we can improve upon things that are for, how it could be used, the future, and so on. Things like the, the, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here as far as what it is. That's what I think. I think the fact that Dr. Stern is bringing up the safety and ethics and the risks and so on. But I do think that we need to form something that will generate this into more than what this, just this policy is right here. I think that that's what we really need.
Can I make a few comments?
I'll let you chime in in a minute. But I really, you know, for me, AI is something that is, as a person, way beyond, I haven't even, I don't even know how to use it, so I'm, I'm still the, the old timer. That's when I have to make some kind of a presentation, I, I need to do it. I don't use AI. I don't even know how to use it, although one person did tell me how to do it and did put, I think they put ChatGPT on my, my telephone. I have, it's, it's an amazing thing. So I, I would refer to you, Dr. Seaman. I, I see this as something, as a stepping stone that we can improve upon and with the, with the, what Dr. Stern has put in there. But the, we do have cheating policies in the district and so on. So it's not about the cheating policies. It's about making this so that our kids are using it to, as you said from this document, that they know how to use it to improve, to cite and assist themselves in doing something. And, and how to, and, and get the teachers to accept it. I think that that's another problem.
Can I make some comments to finish up my thoughts?
Okay, well, we'll go around a little bit, and then we'll take a vote. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so you're absolutely right. Russell, so what I want to do is just to make sure we have this policy in place. But in terms of the rollout and the curriculum and the scope and sequence of AI, as Dr. Chernus has says, has said, there are whole AI academies. I would love to see that. MIT has that. Duke University has their own OpenAI model, and I really think that we can do this. And it would take a task force. I want educators on there. I want technology people. I want parents, leaders from our city to do that. And I want to say that AI is already, of course, being used in the classroom. I know that one of my colleagues was saying, well, you know, how would it be used for reading? Or how would it be used for a variety of things? It's already in use in many ways, in wonderful ways in the classroom. Even if you just look at spell check, that is a sort of a micro part of AI that many of us don't mind using, and we don't consider it cheating if you, if you use it. I will say too, that the AI cheating or academic, lack of academic integrity definitely has evolved to address AI specifically. It is not, you cannot apply just the regular no cheating policy because it's very nuanced with how you can get the best benefit from AI and what the line is or the threshold between using it as a, as a tool versus just saying, hey, write the essay for me. For example, a good AI teacher might say, write your essay and then ask the AI if it could evaluate it for you, or if it could give pointers on how you can restructure paragraph two. Those are some of the uses that are used, that actually are of a real scaffold for, for writers. So I just want to say that I think that we can endlessly talk about different grade levels and different objectives for AI or project-based learning that different students or, or groups of students demonstrate how they use AI. But my concern is just that the policy that we were lacking, and CSBA came out with one, I just thought, hey, this would be a great opportunity just to make some of the starting points that CSBA offered. But also, I did come across these amazing documents that, Dr. Seaman, you had developed or incorporated into our documents. And I just thought this would be a good starting point. But Dr. Chernus, I think your idea of a study session is a very good one. And I know that we have a lot of folks, probably people younger than I am out there, parents and educators, who, who could really point us in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you. I will go around for a brief comment if there's anything else, and then we can take a vote. Okay?
I just want to say that I'm someone who uses AI every single day. Not in that way, but I mean, it's a, it's a really great resource. I use it every single day when I'm studying for tests. It generates like practice test questions. It gives me new ideas, new perspectives. And I think it's important that students look at it in more of like a positive light rather than like, oh, I'm doing something bad, because it can be something really useful and helpful. And I think it will help our students succeed. And this is something that's coming into the future with us, whether we like it or not. So I think going in with that kind of perspective is really important.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, we're not going to vote on this item. Just being clear that this is not a first reading. These are sample. Well, I would, okay, I, my recommendation would be given what we're hearing is that we need more deliberation on a policy.
Yes, I did. I can withdraw my motion.
Who did the second?
Uh, Russell.
Yes.
I will draw my second.
Okay, well then I will make a motion to table this pending further consideration and study. If I have motion to that, I don't know if we need to have a second on that. Just make a motion to.
Do we need a motion, or if we just withdraw and dies for now?
We withdraw the thing, so.
And it can come back when we're ready?
So I don't think we have it to table it then. Okay, all right.
Well, I'm glad we had this conversation.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
Can I ask Charlotte, with your experience, how is it in the classroom when students are not using AI, let's say, and they do an amazing assignment and they're accused of using AI? Have you heard that and seen that?
Yeah, I hear it every day.
There we go.
Yeah. I mean, there are a lot of like indicators, like if you use a dash or like an Oxford comma, like things like that, basic skills that a student should have, like in an AP English class. Those are normally indicators of using AI, but like I use those things every day in my writing. And so it can be flagged, and I, I don't know, like there's really no way of like differentiating.
That's, that's the problem. That's why I was saying, either we educate our students to do their work with AI and not say, do not use AI, but then get graded according to how their work is, or just do the traditional writing, you know, which will be a lot harder to grade.
Also too, I think one of the big conversations is going to be is, is AI the Netflix? And is the curriculum itself the blockbuster video?
Right.
You know, where it's, it's, it's not about trying to fit AI into what we already do. It's about, do we change what we already do to fit into the future of AI?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right. I will now move on to a.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but are we, did we come to terms on establishing a task force or tagging on to the one that exists but broadening it? Do we want to decide that now?
Well, I think, Dr. Chernus, you should probably bring that up and.
I think we'll come back with a recommendation.
Right.
Thank you.
All right.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, lastly, it for tonight, I'm sort of, is the substitute teacher selection and evaluation. I understand, Dr. Seaman, that you have some things to add to this discussion for us to, please, if you'd like to go ahead.
Actually, I, I raised this question, and I just wanted to thank the board and for the effort that was made with swing. I feel like as a board, we've been asking so much more of our teachers in the last one to two years. And our teachers, like us, have the right and have the need to be outside of school for a variety of reasons, whether they're, they're taking care of their parents, they're taking care of their little ones themselves. They have to renew their DMV license. They have to go and get a passport, whatever it is that's happening. Maybe they're on the union negotiation committee, and they've got to be out of the classroom consistently. And even, for example, at the middle school, we have two eighth-grade math teachers who are doing a great job being part of the Avid program. And they need to be out of the classroom on an Avid field trip. And it was driving me crazy that our, our teachers needed, for whatever reason, to be outside of the classroom. And they would come back in a couple of days later, or maybe they were not taking care of what they had to do because they did not want to leave their students and come back to a bit of chaos. And I'm really proud of the work that the board did together to bring on swing because I am hearing that the combination of the teachers that we have and the swing teachers are really actually creating a consistent pool of qualified substitutes. And then I also heard about a new program called Frontline. So I just want to be clear on what happens at this moment. Have, has the superintendent, because that's what the policy provides, that the superintendent recommends the candidate. that the superintendent recommends the candidates. And so are we doing a good enough job? Maybe it's a non-issue at this point, but are we doing a good enough job to allocate the correct subs for the correct school level, the correct subject matter and the correct grade level? Like I'll give you an example. On the union committee, negotiation committee, there's a TK teacher, a fifth grade teacher and a high school teacher. So do we have a, a superintendent approved list of TK through second grade teachers so that the folks in HR know this is our preferred list? They, they are really familiar with our scope and sequence. They can hold the fort down and the teacher can come back three days later and their students have not missed a beat. And then do we have a third through fifth grade set of preferred substitutes? And then for middle school, I think it would, it would need to be broken down into subject and the same for high school. I'm just really interested in systems being effective and being efficient. And I think that as we ask more and more of our teachers, we have a duty to make sure the subs are the right ones.
Yeah, and I couldn't agree more. I want to thank the Board of Education for obviously being able to provide us funds to be able to explore. If you remember, this is back in April of first we piloted with Swing Education in collaboration with our BHGA substitute members as well. Through that process, Frontline has been with us. One of the questions was around a frontline platform. Frontline platform has been within the district for multiple years. It's our absence tracking platform. And what that does is it allows anybody, even myself included and Dr. Turnus, if we were to be out of the office, whether that be a conference to an illness, we are submitting in frontline. One, it helps with payroll tracking. It also helps with time in, time out for certain positions within our district. So it's really a payroll HR platform. We though, just over the last about two months, have been working with Swing and Frontline to be able to integrate. So we have the integration now in place. And that's why you're now hearing more about frontline within the substitute placement process.
And they, and they can work in harmony where?
Correct. And so prior to that, they were not, so there was an additional step in the process. And so we actually just met with BHGA the other day also too, to ensure that we, we stay within process of being able to submit the absent, within frontline. From there, then HR also has, then, you know, can view all the substitute requests and ensuring that we're placing content or grade level specialists within those areas to the extent that I'm even receiving those emails every morning now. So I also get that, you know, who's where, what, how, and so will Dr. Gates and site-based administration.
Is there like, for example, how intricate is the frontline system? Does it register, this is a TK teacher? And then, for example, there's a dropdown and these are our four preferred 25, 26 TK subs? Like how, how efficient can the system be?
Yep. So it allows us not only to be able to, and it's not, especially in multi, multiple subject, it's not like grade two, it's more early and then kind of intermediate grade levels. But it also allows us for playground aids. It allows us for instructional aids for special education. It allows us to be able to request and assign specific job duties to specific content, math, English from six, 12, and then really around kind of the earlier elementary to that middle elementary arena. And each day gets better and better, obviously.
And then when, for example, when the subs come in, how do you, how are you able to keep track of who was a great one, who really was able to hold down the fort?
And so the teachers actually have the opportunity to provide feedback on. So when they return back, you know, what's the status of the class?
Yeah, exactly.
Right? What was the quality of work that was turned back in to the teacher or into the office manager? In addition to site-based administration, have the opportunity to provide feedback as well, both in frontline and in Swing, but also in the subfolder that's provided to the teacher has a feedback form on it. So there's multiple opportunities for both the teacher, site-based administration to provide feedback, for us to be able to block somebody from not being able to serve in the district to, this is somebody that we want.
Can I, can I ask you on that?
So that means smooth sailing, working?
Because it was a new system, you know, we, we just entered into November. And so we were able to get the integration around mid-August. And so, you know, it was even just a topic of conversation at our last leadership meeting with the elementary team. We don't meet secondary for a little bit, but yeah, and we're talking about who's good.
I just want to make one, as a teacher and knowledge of this. One of the things that is available, and this is what you were referring to, Mr. Seaman, and I hope, Dr. Seaman, that this is followed through as a result of the sub and the teacher. And that is, there is a form that is left for the sub to fill out to the teacher, what she covered, what problems she had and so on. And then as a result, the teacher gets to make a comment back. That is handed to the principal of the school. I want to make sure that those don't fall through the cracks.
You mean subfeedback?
Subfeedback and teacher feedback based on what she learned. Because if, if I leave a lesson on something and I leave the pages, I leave exactly what they need and so on. When I come back the next day, I expect that I will, she leaves me a note, I was able to cover this much or so on, in which I would do that even when I was a sub. And I just want to make sure that you're saying that frontline is getting this from this, from the principal and putting it in so we evaluate the subs. That's my concern because they, they get to say, you learn a little bit about the teacher yourself as a result of this too. So I think it's a two-way street and we need, we need to have that evaluation process. That what was important. I'm sorry I stepped in, but.
No, that's good.
I have a little bit of knowledge on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. That's exactly to my point I wanted to say. We need to have an evaluation process. So I have heard many things from subs on both ends. And recently I've also heard in regards to Swing, that's from a teacher or teachers, that they're not happy with the subs from Swing. So we really need to evaluate the subs in every level, whether they're BHGA or they're Swing or, just because they're Swing doesn't mean they're amazing. We were hoping they would be perfect, right? But now I'm hearing that that's not so much on both ends, right? So to that end, I wanted to ask you, in regards to Swing, we hired them in April, you said? So we're seven months in. They're connected with frontline. Frontline, we've used for how many years?
I think it came in with Dr. Horvath because at the time before that, we were literally using paper and pencil to track absentees and payroll.
So about like two or three, two or three years?
Yeah, 2020, so almost five years.
Oh, five years. So now.
That's so circa 1985.
Yeah, so my next question is, if we're using frontline for five years, is a teacher allowed to use the handwritten absentee and, and the way it was before five years?
No, they should be going through frontline. Is there incidences where some teachers may have sidestepped the process potentially?
So now.
And we're catching those.
Let me ask you another question. So my next question is, if a teacher did sidestep the, they cannot just write it in. They need to get it approved, right?
Correct.
So how many people would have sidestepped that if they didn't use frontline?
We only know of one incident that has sidestepped the process and we caught that through payroll. And so we have addressed that problem.
Okay, so a couple of things, a couple of things I'd like to mention is we need to put a policy into place regarding the subs because we're, we're giving directives, but they're not exactly happening. And I'll tell you why. So basically with the subs, the board gave a directive to make sure that a substitute teacher, let's say in the middle school and the high school, is professional, you know, into that subject.
Attending area.
Right? That's not necessarily happening. And then we gave a directive, what was the second directive we said regarding substitutes? Anybody can remind me?
But I think you'll.
There were two things we said.
I think you'll note that the, that the policy is in place, from what I can see, that it's the superintendent who designates the substitutes, which makes sense because it's the district's job to select, to do HR. But I would say that it's taken a moment for the technology to match what the policy is and what the board request has been. And then it is possible that one or more folks since between August and now have slid through the cracks. And what I'm understanding is now everybody knows that this is the new mode. So there's no reason to recodify it because it's already in this policy.
Well, I, I don't, I don't necessarily, because I think that we need to add a few things to maybe the policy that we already have, including the curriculum being, you know, before a teacher leaves or even if it's an emergency, at least if there's some kind of curriculum there that the sub has. And then I love the, what Mrs. Marcus said, that there should be an evaluation form. And I think the evaluation form needs to go in twofolds. One, for the teacher when she comes back or he, and actually looks at what did happen and can, I think the, the best is also the students. Because what happens is that the students end up telling the teacher what happened with the sub or they'll end up telling their family what happened with the sub. And then it ends up coming, you know, to the district somehow. So if we can catch that before that happens, some kind of an evaluation of the subs so that we know, let's say, this sub is excellent, let's put it on our list. And then we can have our teachers pick from the subs that, that match. So we can give them like five or 10 subs to choose from. I think it's, it's more beneficial like that because I've heard a lot of complaints. And I, we don't want to hear any more complaints. We want this, we want it to be a continuation of education that they don't miss a beat.
Yep. I completely agree with you and I do want to piggyback off of what Ms. Manatari had stated is just history and timeline, right? We implemented Swing in April. We've had four different people supervising HR since then. When I was, I was able to.
Fully?
I know. When I was able to work with human resources, we were able to fully integrate then finally into frontline. So exactly like Ms. Manatari has stated, as we're implementing a new system after the start of the school year, you know, there were some teachers that were still utilizing the old system. And then again, like we stated, you know, working with business services, it has been able to help us clean up those systems and also just re-educate both office managers at the sites and the site-based administration, right? And then, which led us into having discussions with our, you know, partners, working with BHGA. Like Dr. Gates and myself worked with BHGA president just the other day on this exact topic. Not in reaction to any situation, just in reaffirming our system and our process. It is an expectation that the teachers are providing subplans to all of our substitute teachers when they're absent, which should be a continuation of the curriculum and scope and sequence of their coursework, that there shouldn't be an additional gap because our teacher is helping us out by going on a field trip or needs to go to the DMV for a new driver's license. But that is an expectation in this process. And there is a feedback, we haven't looped in that student feedback piece, so I'll definitely explore that with Dr. Gates and our site-based administration.
Okay, I think that would be a great piece to add because I did see the system and I know how it works and I see, I see the, the jotted directions and, and all that. And I think that's, that's great. And I'm, I just want to make sure that that process is locked in and everybody understands it, you know, all our staff understands and it's not being bypassed, especially since we've had it for five years and now we integrated it with Swing. But because we hired Swing, and remember, when we did hire Swing, we said it was for one year, right? We said we were gonna try it. And since I heard some, you know, not so good feedback from teacher, I would like to make sure that we evaluate the Swing subs, all the subs, so that we get the best of the best. So we can't, and we're, we're paying a lot of money for this and we did it for a reason. So I just want to make sure it's working so that when we approve it again for another year, we know what we're approving. Right? Thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion on substitutes at this time?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Okay, well. Not here?
No, he said he.
Oh, Dr. Stewart, there you are. Hi.
I cut out for a second.
Board reports. You want to make a board report?
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cave?
I just want to highlight my excitement for the new construction, especially the auditorium. That's something really exciting. And also just everything that we're doing with AI. I'm really excited for the future and our plans with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I know most of my colleagues are gonna bring up all the highlights that have happened in the district for the last couple of weeks. So I just want to focus on one. I just want to give a huge shout out to Shef Lys and all of his culinary students at the ribbon cutting for Salter and the opening night of Little Women. I was absolutely blown away by the quality of food and desserts that were prepared for the guests and the families. I thought it was world-class. And it just got me thinking that I just really believe that we need to expand the opportunities for the culinary department to be able to supply food, not only for these special events, but even PTA meetings, even the board meetings. You know, we do spend, you know, I don't know exactly how much, Chrissy, but we do spend money every single board meeting for the food that we have and to utilize this incredible department and these incredible kids who make things that I, trust me, I live in Beverly Hills, I've been here a long time, I go out a lot. This food and desserts were way better than half the restaurants in this town. So just a big shout out to that department and those kids. And I hope that we can find greater opportunities for them to showcase their skills in the future.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Manatari?
Thank you so much. I don't have too much more to add to that. I have attended recently the Salter Family Ribbon Cutting and it was amazing to see that facility, to see our students enjoying it. I agree with you, Mrs. Marcus. I thought the stage design for the Diary of Anne Frank was beautiful. And this one with its rotation and its mechanics was even more impressive. I'm really proud of us as a board. The, what we're bringing forward, thank you, Mr. Stewart, on the KBEV is super exciting. The KL Peters Auditorium is super exciting. The front lawn is super exciting. The parking facilities next year, based on the presentation from Fonda Solari this evening, would be ready in October 2026, maybe November. So it'll go hand in hand with when the fantastic, phenomenal athletic pavilion with the Conheim, the new Conheim and the outdoor pool is ready in December 2026. And next week is Thanksgiving. I am so incredibly grateful to have the honor of being a board member. It has been the honor of my lifetime. I am grateful to everybody sitting up here in this dais and in this room. And I wish you all a healthy and happy holiday with your family. And we will continue to try to get it right for our community.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Sabag?
Yes, thank you, everybody, for your report. And Mrs. Manatari, I love everything you said. Ditto to all of that. Thank you for saying that. And I would just repeat everything. So whatever Judy said, that's, that's what I would like to say. And I would just like to say for everybody to have a wonderful time off. We're gonna have a few days off. And for everybody to have a safe holiday and enjoy theirs, themselves. Thank you.
We're winding down. I just want to iterate the discussion we had on IA tonight, or AI. I can never remember which way it goes, but one is instructional assistance and one is artificial intelligence.
Same, same.
And so I quickly interchange the two words. I would like to, again, tell everybody how wonderful the play was. And I know that there's still a chance to attend it this week. There's a couple more performances, I think Thursday and Friday and Saturday. And I hope that they will take advantage of it. Again, I would like to talk about one of the sporting events. Again, I would like to talk about one of the sporting events that has started. Soccer started this week and I can brag a little bit. My, my son was on the JV, my grandson was on the JV team and they won their first game yesterday, four to two. So I. And.
That's what we want to hear.
I don't like to brag, but he played at least half the game. And again, I wish everybody a very wonderful break Thanksgiving. Don't overeat. That's one of the problems we have with that holiday. We eat way too much and then the next day we feel, oh, my gosh, so bloated. And I want everybody to have a wonderful week off, a safe week. If you're traveling, travel safely, return in safe health. And with that, I, before I adjourn the meeting, I'd like to say that the next board meeting will be the night of December 9th. It's a regular board meeting, December 9th. And the following week will be the organizational board of meeting, which to everybody, we, I hope they will show up. It's the changing of the board during that time. We reelect a new president and a vice president. And I look forward to seeing as many people as possible that can come here that evening. There will be food that will be catered by whoever caters it. And I think with that, I now can see that it's 8:17 and I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.